We'd like to get the proceedings started this morning. Well, that was quick. Geez, thank you. Okay, well, it is 9:43 and I will call this meeting in the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order and ask Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Good morning, Supervisors Serna, Kennedy, Frost, Hume, Desmond, and you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, the next, we have the Sacramento Sheriff's Office Honor Guard here to present the flag, post a color, so I please ask you all to join me and stand. I'd ask everybody to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order up! Ready, action!
Thank you, please be seated. And I want to thank the Sheriff's Office for that presentation. And welcome, everybody, here this morning. It is great to see such a full chamber with so many friends and elected colleagues from throughout Sacramento County. I'm very happy to be presiding over our proceedings today. I will let the clerk go to reading the statement and then I'll talk a little bit about how we're going to set the agenda for this morning. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, January 13th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with the directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to Clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or off-agenda matter and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make a comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. The clerk will transfer each caller into the meeting. You may be on hold for an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comment will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see Clerk staff or assistance or contact the Clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay, thank you, Flo, I appreciate that. So, I'm going to, this morning's agenda, we're going to take things out of order a little bit. We will start with Item 41, the swearing-in of the elected officials. Then we'll move to the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. We will adjourn, or take a recess, I'm sorry, to the lobby for some refreshments, a little reception for about 20 minutes. When we reconvene, we'll go on to our morning time matters, Items 43 and 44. Then we'll go to the consent calendar and then off-agenda comments. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, and I'm sure Madam Clerk and my colleagues will not be shy in letting me know if I'm missing something or screwing something up. Certainly Supervisor Kennedy won't.
You missed 42, Mr. Kennedy.
Oh, sorry, 42 as well, yes. So, then with that, let's start with Item 41.
Okay, let me get to that item. I'm wearing multiple hats here today. Item 41 is the elected public official ceremony, swearing-in. And we are swearing-in, and I'll call everyone's name in the order. We are swearing-in Christina Nguyen for the Office of the Assessor. We are swearing-in Tin Ho for the Office of the District Attorney. We are swearing-in Phil Serna for the Supervisory District, the First Supervisory District. We are swearing-in Supervisor Patrick Kennedy for the Second District and Supervisor Hume, who is our newly-elected Supervisor for District 5. And so, I will ask the Assessor, Ms. Christina Nguyen, to meet me at the podium, please.
Good morning, Christina.
Can we get the mic? Thank you. You are hereby being sworn in for the elected Office of the Assessor, County of Sacramento, State of California. On behalf of the County of Sacramento, I Florence Evans, Clerk of the Board, am hereby swearing-in Christina Nguyen, Assessor of the County of Sacramento. Please raise your right hand and repeat the following statement. I Christina Nguyen do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I Christina Nguyen do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion. That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
You are hereby sworn in before me Florence Evans on this 10th day of January 2023. Congratulations. Well, good morning, and good morning to everyone here and everybody who's online. Thank you for participating in my oath of office. This is my second term. And I just want to start by first thanking the Clerk of the Board, Florence, and her staff for organizing this very meaningful event. I think that taking my oath in the epicenter of where all these decisions are made in the county is very meaningful. So, thank you Florence. And I also want to thank my family, particularly my husband Ed Weinman, who's here and standing by me. He has been my rock through all my time as Assessor, and I just really appreciate his support. I'd also like to recognize some of my staff and my leadership team that are here today to witness this. I really couldn't do everything I do without them, and they're really making it all happen day in and day out. I really appreciate that. And finally, I'd like to thank the voters, the residents of the county, for continuing to place their trust in me as their Assessor. Taking my oath here today in this very public venue just continues my promise to deliver services to them and make sure I'm meeting all my obligations as required by law. Once again, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Christina. Okay, next, we'll move on to our District Attorney.
Mr. Tin Ho is being sworn in by the Honorable Judge Helena Guam.
Good morning, Supervisors and members of the community. I'm Judge Helena Guam. And Tin, I am honored to be asked to swear you in today and be part of this history-making moment. As Tin Ho will be the first person of color to become the District Attorney in Sacramento County. Yes. And I told him. And many of you know his compelling personal history. I told Tin that I will forgive him for not joining me on the bench and becoming a judge because I know, and he knows, he understands the awesome responsibility of the role of the District Attorney, and he is uniquely qualified to appreciate that role and make sure that justice is served for all members of our community. This moment also is very special to me as one immigrant swearing in another immigrant. You're hereby being sworn in for the elected Office of the District Attorney, County of Sacramento, State of California. I Helena Guam, Judge of the Superior Court of California, County of Sacramento, am hereby swearing-in Tin Ho, the District Attorney of the County of Sacramento. Please raise your right hand and repeat the following statement after me. I, Tin Ho.
I, Tin Ho.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I would defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this, make sure I get this right, obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
You're hereby sworn in before me Helena Guam, Judge of the Superior Court of the County of Sacramento, this 10th day of January 2023.
First of all, I would like to thank Judge Helena Guam for swearing me in today. I remember when she was a prosecutor in my office and I would sit there when she was a lead attorney and get advice from her. So, it's a true honor to have her here today to swear me in as one immigrant to another immigrant. And I recognize essentially the significance, the historical significance of this particular election and my election to Sacramento District Attorney. As an immigrant, as a refugee, as someone who came to this country with nothing but the clothes on their back and had to learn English from watching Bugs Bunny cartoons, I am particularly cognizant of the history that we are making. As I mentioned recently, there used to be a wall at the DA's office where there were 35 other photographs of every prior elected District Attorney. And I would stand there and I would look at those photographs, and none of them looked like me. And so, I am cognizant of the history that we are making today. And the role of the District Attorney, and I'll talk about the profession for a moment, is one imbued with solemn responsibility of being the gatekeeper to our system of justice. When you look at Lady Justice, you see in one hand that she has a sword, a sword that essentially represents accountability that we have in public safety. But on the other hand, she holds the scales of justice, which represents fairness, balance, and equality. And that is the constant struggle that we have to make sure that our system of justice is fair and equal to everybody. And I recently gave and mentioned an old African proverb. If you want to go fast, go alone. If you want to go far, go together. And so, here we are in the seat of government for the entire County of Sacramento, 1.55 million people in this county. And what we have to do is go together. And so, when I look at each of the Board of Supervisors here and I look at Ann Edwards, our amazing county exec, and Eric Jones, who works with our Justice Partner, I recognize that we must go together forward. And there are a whole host of issues for us to face, whether it's tackling the homeless crisis in a compassionate but accountable manner, whether it's dealing with gun violence, gang violence, sexual violence, domestic violence. We must go together. And I am so looking forward to working together with all five of you and your wonderful staff and the people behind us here that represent the community so that we, as a community, not only feel safe but be safe where we raise our family, where we worship, where we work, where we play. And so, I'm looking forward to the next six years and beyond working with you. Thank you so much for the honor of being here today. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations, District Attorney Ho. We look forward to working with you as well and going far together with you. Okay, next, swearing in my colleague Supervisor Serna.
And so, we have Ms. Ashley Soltani, who will be swearing-in Supervisor Serna of the First District.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Ashley Soltani, and I'm here today to swear-in District 1 County Supervisor Phil Serna. And it's an honor and a privilege to be here today, so thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Ashley.
You are hereby being sworn in for the elected Office of Board of Supervisor, First Supervisory District, County of Sacramento, State of California. On behalf of the County of Sacramento, I Ashley Soltani am hereby swearing-in Board of Supervisor Philip R. Serna of the First Supervisory District, County of Sacramento. Please raise your right hand and repeat the following statement after me. I, Philip R. Serna, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I, Philip R. Serna, do solemnly swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties about which I am about to enter.
You are hereby sworn in before me Ashley Soltani on this 10th day of January 2023.
Thank you, Ashley. So, first, forgive me to my colleagues for turning my back on you, but I do want to address everyone that's here in chambers with us face-to-face and hopefully those that are in the back room managing the cameras can likewise ensure that we can be seen and heard here on the other side of the podium. So, first, let me thank Ashley. Unlike the first couple of elected officials are Christina Nguyen, our Assessor, and Tin Ho, our DA, who I think obviously both know who they sworn very well, one a husband, one a friend, and a member of the bench. Quite frankly, I don't know Ashley all that well. We actually know each other and we communicate via Facebook. But you're going to hear shortly why I have asked Ashley to do the honor of swearing me in this morning. And it has everything to do with what I would arguably say is one of the most profound moments during my 12 years of service on this Board of Supervisors. But before we do that, let me just share a few words certainly of thanks. First and foremost, I, like the others that have spoken, want to thank the voters of the First District for electing me to a fourth term on the Board of Supervisors here in Sacramento County. As my dear friend, mentor, and former supervisor, Don Natale, who is here in the audience and with whom I've had the good fortune of serving for the past 12 years, reminds me now I bear a bit of the responsibility that he had for several terms and years, and that's to be the senior member of this Board of Supervisors. And that's a reflection that is a little odd to me at this point. I will also say too that reflecting on the last 12 years, I've been very fortunate that the last three re-elections, I've been unopposed in my reelection. And some of my friends and even members of the media will start a conversation on occasion saying, "Well, that's quite a mandate." And I'd say it's furthest thing from the truth. The mandate that we're given is not based on who runs against you or how many people run against you. The mandate that is given to you is whether or not the voters believe and trust in your ability to govern and serve. And so, it is incredibly, incredibly humbling that I would be given the good fortune to serve a fourth term. So, that's why I want to begin with the voters of the First District and the people of Sacramento County. Of course, I cannot serve, none of us can serve, the way we do and the way we want to without the many people that work with us, alongside us, who quite frankly do most of the day-to-day, very difficult work, whether it's dealing with constituent concerns, answering questions, helping us problem solve. That is fundamentally what we're here to do. And so, I want to certainly thank my very, very capable staff. And I want to begin with Lisa Nava. Lisa has been my Chief of Staff now for over 10 years. And where's Lisa? Lisa's Nava's over here. And she has just been an incredible, incredible asset, not just to me, but to the people of the First District and the people of Sacramento County. Her service, her civic service is beyond compare, at least in my opinion. And the fact that she's stayed with me and put up with me for as long as she has, I am indeed very grateful. I also want to acknowledge Carrie Ayello, who is here as well. Carrie thought she was retiring several years ago, and the moment that she thought she was going to be retired, she became a retired annuitant working in our district office part-time, but doing a tremendous job for several years, especially when it comes to media relations and helping us with our messaging that comes out of our district, whether it's our Facebook, our social media presence, or our website. She's been a valuable asset again to the people of the First District and to me personally. I want to thank Erin Chong. Where's Mr. Chong? Mr. Chong is in the back there taking photos. Erin, too, has had a very distinguished and long career in public service, first with the City of Sacramento for a number of years and with former Supervisor Jimmy Yee. And I've had the good fortune of having Erin on our team for now several years as my Special Assistant. And again, cannot do what we do, not just what I do, but what we do, and accomplish without Erin's help. And then lastly, where's, I think Monica's here, right? Where's Monica? Oh, she's in the back, okay. Monica is the newest member of our team, and she has been tremendous. And she's really proven over a short amount of time what we need in terms of the face-forward part of our district as our assistant, our administrative assistant, making sure that the first voice you hear, the first impression you get from our district is one that is courteous, one that is helpful, and one that I can say during my tenure has really been impressive. And so, I think Monica's likely to go pretty far if she still wishes with this organization. I do want to thank my colleagues behind me. They each have been, in their own way, very supportive of me, not just when I've proposed legislation here in the county or resolutions or initiatives, but I think for each of them, they've demonstrated to their constituents and certainly to me that they govern for the right reasons. They govern from the heart. We may not all disagree. In fact, I think some of our most productive meetings, quite frankly, have been the ones that don't always end with a 5-0 vote because that is the product of a democratic governing process. But it always gives me something to think hard about in terms of different reasons why they hold those opinions and vote the way they do. So, to each of the four people behind me, including Mr. Hume, our newest member of the Board, who I've known for over 20 years in his service to the City of Elk Grove and to other special districts that I've had the good fortune of serving with him on, including RT, I know that we, going forward, will continue to have that very respectful yet productive relationship to represent the people of Sacramento County to the best of our ability. I will make mention of the fact that I am very, very proud that we continue to do the work that we do here, including different initiatives that I've had. Again, the good fortune to be a small part of, most notably, the Black Child Legacy Campaign, which was birthed out of an initiative, the R-A-C-D, the Reducing African American Child Death Initiative, some 11 years ago when I was a freshman member of this Board, which continues to do incredible work that is very promising in terms of reducing the disparity in death rates between African-American children and others in Sacramento County. I believe it is some of the most important work that we do. And with that, I want to invite Ashley to say a few words and enlighten you a little bit more about our special relationship and why I've asked her to do me the great honor of swearing me into a fourth term. Ashley?
Thank you. Move this down. Hi, guys, I'm Ashley Soltani, and it's an honor and a privilege again to be here today and to be able to swear in a man that I respect so much and who has impacted my life in such a positive way. So, I met Phil, I want to say, in winter of 2016. At that time in my life, I was experiencing chronic homelessness due to drug addiction. And Phil Serna and his colleagues were doing the point-in-time homeless count. And I remember it was a dark and rainy night, and I was approached by Phil and his colleagues, and they were asking me questions, you know, about my situation and kind of how I came to be in the boat that I was in. And I'll never forget the level of kindness, compassion, and the resources that I was presented with, you know? And I'm forever grateful for that, you know? I, you know, I didn't know these people at all, and... I didn't know these people at all, and yet they were here to help me. And, you know, it was a really positive experience in my life. So not long after that, I, you know, made the decision to, you know, change my life. And with the assistance of Supervisor Cerner, I was able to get into a program at the Mather Community Campus. It's ran by Volunteers of America. And, you know, that was my step up out of my situation, out of homelessness, out of addiction. And I've been, you know, clean and sober for over five years. And... (applause) Thank you so much. And, you know, I'm just so grateful for, you know, I was born and raised in Sacramento County. I wouldn't want to live anywhere else. I love our county. I love our state. And it's because of people like Phil and his colleagues, all these wonderful supervisors behind me, that we have such an amazing place to live and that people in my situation have resources to change their lives, you know? And I also have to thank my family, you know? My family was a big part of that. So, you know, in a general way, that was how Phil and I met, and we've stayed friends. And we've done, you know, we did an interview with Sacramento Bee, and there was an article published about the opioid crisis in Sacramento. And we also did an interview on KFBK Radio. So that was really exciting. So hopefully, you know, one thing at a time, we can shed some light on the homelessness crisis, the opioid epidemic, and, you know, hopefully we can change the direction, you know, that things have been going. So again, thank you so much, Phil. I'm so honored to be here. I'm so excited for you to serve for another, a fourth term, and I just couldn't think of a better human to do that for our county. So thank you so much. (applause)
So before I conclude, let me just, I just want to make it clear. Ashley had some very gracious things to say about me, but it's not me that I wanted her to really necessarily focus on. It's really the hope that she has inspired in me. Quite frankly, she's done more than she knows to help prop me up, to get up in the morning again, to, you know, face the critics, to do the difficult work. Because when people that are in the situation that Ashley was in, quite frankly, that can find the wherewithal to do what she's done, she didn't mention, by the way, she got married, she has a beautiful daughter, you know, she's gainfully employed. She's just a remarkable story, and she's quite frankly a hero to me. And that's why, like others who had their spouses or their own heroes swear them in, I wanted this hero to do the same for me. So thanks again, Ashley.
Thanks.
Now, in years past, when I've been sworn in, I almost made the mistake of not thanking the most important person in my life. I'm not going to make that mistake here. But I wanted to save the best for last, and that, of course, is my dear wife of 27 years, Roxanna. And Roxanna has been someone that, if I didn't have in my life, didn't have, supporting me every hour, minute, day of what I've chosen to do. And believe me, she's a very private person. Politics is not in her DNA like it is to some degree in mine. And so, believe it or not, it was kind of a difficult thing, I think, at first for her to understand and accept that I would be a very public figure at some point. And so she's put up with a great deal, and she deserves an incredible amount of thanks, not just from me, but I think from the people of Sacramento County, because she permits me to do what I try to do in the service to my constituents. So Roxanna, I love you, and I want to thank you. Please come up. Babe, these flowers are for you, and I would hope that you understand how much I truly love you, and I appreciate your support every single day.
Thank you.
And that concludes my fairly long-winded speech in terms of being sworn in and expressing myself as I have again. Thank you all. Thank you, Supervisor Cerner. And next, I'd ask Supervisor Kennedy to come to the podium to be sworn in.
And Mr. Maurice Reed will be swearing in Supervisor Patrick Kennedy of the 2nd District.
You are hereby being sworn in for the elected office of Board of Supervisor, 2nd Supervisory District, County of Sacramento, State of California. On behalf of the County of Sacramento, I, Maurice Reed, am hereby swearing in Supervisor Patrick Kennedy of the 2nd Supervisory District, County of Sacramento. Raise your right hand and repeat the following statement after me. I, Patrick Kennedy, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
I, Patrick Kennedy, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
That I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
You are hereby sworn in before me, Maurice Reed, this 10th day of January 2023.
Thank you, sir. So four years ago, I gave a long-winded speech all of two words. I'm going to do a little more this time, but not much. First, I want to thank my good friend and really a true mentor, Maurice Reed. Maurice has really stood behind me in all the crazy things that I've done in my career and including this, and I would not be standing here if not for the support of Maurice Reed. So thank you, Maurice. And next, I want to thank, first and foremost, the voters of District 2 for continuing to give me the honor to serve in what I think is one of the most, if not the most important local elected position in government. It's a true honor to represent the people of the district that I grew up in, that I raised my children in, and will continue the next four years to do everything I can to earn that honor. And finally, I want to thank the best staff that I could have. I can't do this alone, and I truly, you know, realize that without you, and by you, I mean first and foremost, the three who work with me on a daily basis, but also a lot of the people you see over on this side of the room. We really have the best staff that I've ever seen in public service, and they make us look good, usually, and really make it so that we can achieve what we do achieve for the people of Sacramento County. And finally, of course, I want to thank my wonderful partner and wife. I don't have flowers. Thank you, Phil. But you know I couldn't do this without you. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. And last but not least, we have Supervisor Patrick Hume. Please step to the podium.
And we have the Mr. Supervisor, past Supervisor, Don Natoli, who will be swearing him in.
Well, I just wanted to just take a brief moment to congratulate our assessor, our district attorney, the two supervisors from District 1 and 2, and certainly new supervisor from District 5. And it's a real honor. It's a very special day for me. I've had some special days in, certainly in recent times, but this is a very, very special one. It's a great day, a proud day for me, and a proud day for people of this county. And so I'm delighted, Pat, that you asked me. I've known you for many, many years, your family, and certainly Lisa as well. And I'm delighted to be able to stand before my colleagues, before this audience, and certainly the people of Sacramento County, too, and minister the oath of office for District 5 Supervisor. So if you'd raise your right hand and follow after me, you are hereby being sworn in for the elected office of the Board of Supervisor, 5th District, County of Sacramento, State of California. And on behalf of the County of Sacramento, I, Don Natoli, am hereby swearing in you, Patrick Hume, as the district supervisor for District 5, Sacramento County. You already have your right hand raised, so we're ready to go. Okay. Please repeat after me. I, Patrick Hume...
I, Patrick Hume.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I will well and faithfully discharge...
That I will well and faithfully discharge...
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
You are hereby sworn in before me, Don Natoli, this audience, and people of Sacramento County, this 10th day of January 2023. Congratulations, Mr. Supervisor.
Don't walk away yet, babe. So Supervisor Cerner started the tradition of addressing the crowd and not the colleagues, so I will follow through. And like Patrick Kennedy, I will bemoan the fact that I didn't think to bring roses, but I do have this nice county lapel pin. I may need to ask for it back, so don't lose it. But I obviously, I want to start, rather than finish, by thanking Lisa for being here. Without her, I would not be here in so many different ways, the least of which is the fact that she was my strongest supporter, my strongest volunteer, and my rock and everything. And so thank you for being here. The other important... Yeah, that's an applause line, Jim. Go ahead, Jim. Unfortunately, the other very important woman in my life, my mom, could not be here today because she, my sisters, were both waylaid by the aftermath of the storms. And one had a 50-year-old redwood fall in her backyard, and the other one is trapped out in Slough House due to a downed power line. So unfortunately, she couldn't be here, but I know she's watching from where she's sitting on her couch, and I have a dime in my pocket to signify the fact that my dad is watching down over me as well. But I do want to thank all of you that did brave the weather and come out. And I know that there are many people in the unincorporated part of town and down in the Delta that maybe couldn't make it out here today. But thank you all that did make the effort. And as has been said by my colleagues, thank you especially to the voters of District 5, who narrowly, but did put their faith in me. And I believe, I've heard it said, that I am the most narrowly elected supervisor in Sacramento County history, which, as Phil said, I will take that mandate as what it is, which the faith has been put in me to carry on the work that's been going on in Sacramento County. And it was important to me to have now former Supervisor Natoli swear me in, because I stand here on the shoulders of giants. And I stand on the shoulders of giants that I've known my whole life, not the least of which is the gentleman that was just up here, his predecessor, Toby. And I know that, much like the Native American adage that says we do not inherit the earth from our ancestors, we borrow it from our children, that I am up there to do a little bit of good work until the next person comes in to continue after me. And so I will try my best to do the good, important work as well and faithfully as I can. I am excited about the trajectory that the county is on right now, and I think we have great things ahead of us with the work of the new executive and the staff that she's building around her. I'm excited for the organization. I'm excited for the 5th District. I wish, obviously, that I was coming into this office with sunny days instead of a little bit of what's going on out there. But that just goes to show that you have to be prepared and you have to be ready to hit the ground running. And so I hope to do that. I hope to make every voter who put their trust in me proud, and I hope to maybe win over one or two others that didn't think I was capable, or at least their preferred candidate, that I am certainly trying my best. And so I will say that I look forward as well to serving with you for the next six years, even though only four of them may be as supervisor. But, you know, we'll see what the future brings. And I have served with, as Phil mentioned, with everyone on that dais in some capacity or another over the past 16 years, and I look forward to doing so on a more regular basis. And I just am very proud of all of the work that was put together. And I, too, would like to thank my staff, even though they're small but mighty. And so I think Maria was here, Secretary Maria, there she is. So she is another retired annuitant that came back to help keep things running smoothly. And while I was out of the country when the turnover happened, turnover from Dawn to myself, Maria, and then former Supervisor Natoli's chief of staff, now Supervisor Hume's chief of staff, Rebecca Sloan, they did a great job of battening down the hatches and making sure the phones got answered and that constituent complaints got handled, and that things happened seamlessly and the transition was smooth. And I'd like to welcome onboard Dominic Pruitt, who is one of my special assistants, who just had his first day Monday. So hopefully, he is learning the ropes as well as I did. I can say that I now know where the elevator from the garage is to get up in the building, so that saves me from having to climb three flights of stairs with a box of paperwork. But there's a lot to learn and a lot to do, and I am just very excited and thankful for the opportunity. And I hope that I am able to follow in the footsteps, but not fill the shoes, but follow in the footsteps of those great men that came before me and do the honor that it deserves until such time as the next supervisor is able to pick up the good work. And I want to thank my colleague Darren Soon, who's here from the Elk Grove City Council. I will miss the camaraderie that we showed as a deliberative body, where we not only had those robust deliberations, which produced better work, but we really got along and we really liked one another as friends off the dais. And so I hope to continue that tradition and continue that on, and I'm just very thankful for this opportunity. And now I think I'm the only thing standing between us and a little bit of refreshments. And so I will follow the best advice Don Natoli ever gave me, that when it comes to speech-making, observe the three Bs: be present, be brief, and be seated. So thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I just couldn't help but observe that in Supervisor Hume's concluding remarks, he referenced "box of papers." And I'm just wondering, if you're planning on carrying on a certain legacy of your predecessor...
I'm glad you mentioned that, Supervisor Cerner, because I want to swage everyone's fears. Ann Edwards did have the building seismically retrofitted because it tilted when Dawn moved out of his office a little bit, so...
Well, thank you, Supervisor Hume. And please, everyone join me in congratulating all of our elected officials who are sworn in this morning. And we do have a little business to conduct still before we break for the reception, but I would ask our new district attorney and Christina certainly to please join the board members down in the well for a photo. certainly to please join the board members down in the well for a photo. Okay, well, thank you very much. And for all the comments from everybody, that was wonderful. Do we have any public comment on item 41?
No, let me just double check. No, not that I am aware of. And if we do, could someone just send me a quick Skype? But to my knowledge, we do not.
Okay.
All right, so let me read that item. Or can we go on to item 42, which is the election of the Board of Supervisors Chairperson and Vice Chairperson of 2023.
Okay, I see Supervisor Serna queued up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to nominate you as our chairman for 2023. And I believe Supervisor Kennedy is our vice chair.
Second. I assume we can do it in one motion?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Well, thank you very much Supervisor Serna. And I believe we have a second from Supervisor Hume. Any other comments from board members? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, well, thank you all. And I do want to just make a very brief comment before we break for a reception. I am truly honored to be the chair this year, only my third year in office. So again, I certainly am open to hearing suggestions from my colleagues. I'm really honored to serve with all four of you. And truly, it is, I know Supervisor Hume has a much bigger challenge to fill the shoes of Supervisor Natoli. But even as chair, I have some shoes to fill. They're bigger than this, than these shoes. This is the...
Look at the hair on that thing.
This is the, yes, the much-awaited bobblehead for Supervisor Natoli. So Supervisor Natoli, I will say either you take it with you or I'm going to put it here at every meeting to channel you. So it's your choice. I'll leave it up to you. And you can see the hair is why the delay in getting the thing is. It was very difficult to get it just right.
The craftsmanship is extraordinary.
The craftsmanship is extraordinary. So, thank you. So I look forward to working with all of you and the community and the wonderful county staff and our new elected officials, having a new sheriff and a district attorney and a new supervisor. I just think we have just wonderful opportunities to, as Supervisor Hume said, to stay on this trajectory that we're on in Sacramento County because I think we're really making a lot of progress in a lot of areas to improve people's lives. So, Ann, I want to thank you and your leadership. And Supervisor Hume and I were just at the EOC yesterday, watching, you know, the hard work in real time by the county staff, working so hard in dealing with all the impacts from these major storms, not only the health and safety and the sheltering of folks, but obviously dealing with all the other municipal services issues that we're all confronting during this time. And I know we'll have more to say about that. But once again, thank you very much. We'll be, we're going to be doing things a little bit differently this year with public comment. We are going to go, we're going to go back to two minutes in public comment, and we're going to try something that the city of Sacramento normally does, which is have the clerk run the public comment. So we'll see how that goes, and we'll certainly be trying it out today. But is there any public comment on this item? Madam Clerk?
No.
Okay. Then with that, if there are no other comments from my colleagues, we will recess for about 20 minutes to the front lobby here for a reception for the elected officials.
Yes.
Great, thank you. We will reconvene. I'll ask our clerk to please call the roll to reestablish quorum.
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Then we will move right on to item 43.
Three, yes. Item 43, approve the attached resolution with honors, which honors the American River Bike Patrol and recognizes their success and achievement of being named the National Ski and Bike Patrol's 2022 Most Outstanding Bike Patrol.
Okay, well, we have our Parks Director Liz Bellis here to present. Good morning, Liz.
Drafted over the last couple of weeks, so I don't have a PowerPoint for you, but I do have some pictures to throw up on the overhead here. I am grateful that your board has given us the opportunity to take just a quick bit of time to recognize one of our partners, the American River Bike Patrol, in an outstanding achievement. But just overall, in general, to recognize their volunteer efforts and the amazing support that they give our department and the constituents of Sacramento County. In 2020, the Department of Regional Parks entered into an MOU with the National Ski Patrol to create the Volunteer Bicycle Patrol Program for the American River Parkway. And the purpose of this program was to provide additional eyes and ears on the trail, general public directional advice, equipment assistance, such as flat tire repair, bike safety programs, assist with special events, and render basic first aid as needed. And I can tell you, every time that I'm out on the trail, which I try to get out there as much as I can, I see members from the Bike Patrol out there helping others, and it warms my heart. In fact, New Year's Day, when we actually had a little bit of sunshine, when people were out there, very happy to have that little bit of sunshine, I saw several members out there helping people, dodging trees a little bit, but helping people. And so in 2022, the American River Bike Patrol was awarded the National Ski and Bike Patrol's Most Outstanding Bike Patrol Award, which is a competitive award, and it was a national award. So we'd like to take this time to recognize them. There are several members that are here in the audience, but I'd like to bring up Jim Chang to offer a few words.
Thank you, Liz. Welcome, Jim.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity to speak before you. I'll take Supervisor Hume's advice and be brief and be seated. For the record, my name is James T. Chang, and I'm the patrol leader of the American River Bike Patrol. First, let me thank this board for listening to the men I have come to affectionately call the Three Amigos: Tim Lyle, Dr. James Margolis, and Rich Fowler. By listening and trusting them with your vote in February 2020, you made the American River Bike Patrol a reality. Since that time, we've developed strong working relationships with Director Bellis and Chief Ranger Orman. With their continued trust and support, the patrol has grown and achieved great successes. The inception of this patrol couldn't have happened at a better time. Along with the COVID pandemic came the increased need for open-air exercise and outdoor activities. We witnessed an unprecedented surge at the Parkway of Parkway visitors: novice walkers, hikers, runners, equestrians, cyclists. They all descended on the Parkway. This created a need for a community-based patrol. And this patrol, the American River Park Patrol, was there to meet that need. Our first year, we grew from a fledgling organization of a few members to a patrol of over 100 or close to 100 members, patrollers. Since June 2020 through August 2022, the American River Bike Patrol has covered over 57,644 miles, through 2,954 patrols, and 7,857 hours of service. This patrol provided 8,257 assists, 596 bike repairs, and most importantly, 215 medical interventions, including two confirmed lifesaving CPR interventions. This patrol has provided community outreach through services through the California International Marathon, California Ironman, Party Part A, Sacramento Century, Thanksgiving Turkey Drive, and the Sea Otter Classic, just to name a few. This patrol has developed close relationships with the Save the American River Association, Protect the American River, Sacramento Bike Hikers, the American River Equestrian Patrol. And as we move into this new year, we'll be acting on our diversity, equity, and inclusion incentives, or initiatives. We have also established goals for expanding our adult, young adult patrol program, Helmets for Kids, developing scholarships, and outreach for youths at risk. Our successes, as previously presented, include the National Ski and Bike Patrol 2022 Most Outstanding Bike Patrol, besting over 200 other bike patrols nationally. We also recently received California Senate Resolution and Commendation just this last September. As I yield the podium, with your permission, I'd like my patrol to stand up so that we can recognize their service and accomplishments. Thank you.
Ms. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to suggest that maybe after your words here, that the Board of Supervisors get a photo with the Bike Patrol.
Absolutely. I was just going to quip that you're taking photos right now, Flo, but we're going to all come down to the well, take a photo with them. Liz, did you have any? James, thank you very much for your comments. Liz, did you have anything else to add before I go to my colleagues here?
I just want to say thank you once again, and thank you to your board for supporting us with our partners. And we feel your support every day, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Liz. For a few colleagues in the queue, I'll turn to Supervisor Serna.
Great, thank you, Ms. Chair. So first, I want to express my sincere gratitude to the Bike Patrol volunteers who do what they do. I have to be honest, I didn't know much about the organization and what you do until I had a chance to share a few words out in the lobby during the brief reception. And it's really heartening to know that we have this resource available to our common constituents, those that want to enjoy the Parkway, specifically cycling the Parkway, the way you have. And just as we have a relationship, for instance, with the DART team when it comes to water safety, this is very encouraging to understand the dedication, commitment that this august organization provides in terms of fixing the flats and, as was mentioned, even lifesaving measures when it comes to first aid attention. So it's very good to know that we have yet another dedicated group of individuals that are willing to flank the county. We can't do it alone. We all say that, whether you're, we're staff people or elected officials up here. The American River Parkway, as we all know, is an incredibly unique and special public asset that deserves our attention, both from the ecological side of things and making sure that the natural resource is preserved and enhanced as best as possible, but also when it comes to the recreational asset that it is. And to know that we have this additional measure in place to help people enjoy the Parkway is, again, very encouraging. And please, if you haven't, and I guess I'm looking at James here, you know, get to know our TOT account here in Sacramento County. That's the transient occupancy tax, which is a little bit of discretionary funding that we deliberate over annually in terms of being able to help organizations like yourself do the great work that you do to, again, help support the Parkway and its people. So again, thank you very much. On behalf of the 1st District and a good portion of the lower reach of the Parkway, again, very grateful for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Frost.
First, I want to congratulate Liz Bellis and your team on your superb leadership of our regional parks. And I know over the past few weeks, you've been through a lot. There's a lot going on in the Parkway's. And I know you must have been working so hard. So thank you for your leadership. And I want to congratulate the Bike Patrol for your receipt of a national award such as that, the Best Bike Patrol Award. I imagine that just having your presence on the Parkway is comforting to everyone there. Even if they don't take advantage of your services, they know there's an organized patrol out there. And it gives a sense of safety and comfort to people out in the Parkway, especially these days when there's so much going on out there. And I also have a sense that if I was in a bicycle and had a problem, I definitely wouldn't want to be, I would be so grateful to see you there. So thank you so much for your service, and I hope you, just hope all the best and that you stay safe out there and keep growing because we really need people like you. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'll finish it up before we, thank you Supervisor Frost, before we have you come down here for photos. But I'm just looking at your website, just want to throw that out there. AmericanRiverBikePatrol.org, right? Just for members of the public, AmericanRiverBikePatrol.org. And you have opportunities there to join because it sounds like you're always looking for folks to join your ranks and certainly to support your efforts through that website. And as someone who has spent an awful lot of time on the American River Parkway and the bike trail, I just really appreciate knowing that you're out there. I know a lot of my constituents know and appreciate you being out there. And I think it's amazing, a lot of the medical aid you've already rendered in such a short term. And certainly, it was an auspicious time to start during COVID because the need became so much greater, like James, like you mentioned. You saw, we saw a huge increase in usage on that Parkway while people were locked down during COVID. So I thank you, and I look forward to continuing to support your efforts. And who knows, one day when I retire, maybe I can join your ranks. Not a very good bike rider, but I'd be willing to serve. So with that, maybe we can all join down here in the well for a photo.
Wait, keep moving. Okay, one, two, and three.
Okay, one, two, and three.
Yeah, if you fall, there's guys there to help you.
Okay, and we'll have to take action on this to approve the resolution. Before we do that, is there any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
I'll double check. We do not have any public comments.
Okay, then I'll turn it to Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I'd like to enthusiastically make the motion to approve the resolution, which honors the American River Bike Patrol, named the 2022 Most Outstanding, now you've changed the screen, so I can't read the rest of it.
I'm sorry.
The Most Outstanding Bike Patrol, thank you.
Okay, we have a first and a second. No further comments, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you. Our next item is Item 44.
Item 44 is the Inmate Welfare Fund Annual Report Fiscal Year 2021-22.
Okay, I will turn it over to, oh, Chief Donelli, you're going to start it off? Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
Good morning, Chair Desmond, members of the board, Madam Clerk, CEO Edwards, and members of the staff. My name is Dan Donelli, I'm a chief deputy with Sacramento Sheriff's Office, currently overseeing correctional services as well as professional standards. I'm here this morning to present the Inmate Welfare Fund Annual Report for Fiscal Year 21-22. The Inmate Welfare Fund was established from Penal Code Section 402.5, which says the sheriff of any county may establish, maintain, and operate a store in connection with the county jail. In our, in our office, we do that via contract with Aramark currently, and they provide all the goods, and commissions, refunds, and rebates are deposited directly into the inmate welfare fund. Inmate welfare funds, I guess I should advance the slide for you, I apologize. Inmate welfare funds shall be expended by the sheriff primarily for the benefit, education, and welfare of the inmates. However, any funds that are not needed for these may be expended for the maintenance of county jail facilities, including the salary and benefits of program personnel, which generally also benefit the inmates. An itemized report of these expenditures shall be submitted annually to the Board of Supervisors. Now, in the past, we have submitted these electronically, and they've been captured and filed. However, in the last two years, members of our office, usually the chief deputy of corrections, have come in and personally provided this to the board. These reports generally show a statement of revenues and expenditures, any change in financial position of IWF, and then a five-year analysis of what we forecast that we may need the IWF for in the future. There's a committee that oversees IWF, and it's chaired by the assistant to the chief deputy of correctional services, who's actually here with me today, Sergeant Leahy, also the chief of departmental administrative services, and then the assistant commanders of our three correctional facilities, Work Release, Main Jail, and the Rio Casasmas Correctional Center. At the request of the board last year, we also added a sixth non-voting member for general oversight, and that is Stephanie Kelly currently. The committee meets a minimum of, minimum of once a year, and three members constitute a quorum. A majority agreement is necessary to authorize recommendations or request funding. Whenever there is an issue, it may be appealed to myself or whoever sits in the seat of the chief deputy of correctional services. Just a general timeline, March 15th of every year, the commanders for the three facilities are provided with the proposed budget. April 15th, the proposed budgets are submitted to Sheriff's Fiscal for review and compilation. May 1st, proposed budgets are submitted to all IWF committee members, all six of them. May 15th, the committee meeting is held, and the proposed budget is discussed and voted on. June 15th, the approved budget is submitted to the chief deputy of correctional services for review, and then to the sheriff for review and final approval. On July 1st, the, the approved budget is effective, and any changes that occur within the year require a separate majority vote. This is a breakdown of our 21-22 revenue. Total revenues of just over $7.5 million of those. Majority comes from our commissary commissions, and it should be noted that the commissary prices are set by our vendor and are under critical review by the IWF committee. They cannot be within or more than 10% of retail, so that there's no price gouging issues that take place. There is consistent cost analysis that is submitted to our office per the contract with the vendor. Telephone commissions, just over $2 million. Interest in the money, $91,619. And then other, the $789,000, I believe, was the money returned to the sheriff's office from the county from the SB 1022 match. This breaks down all of the various expenditures. I won't go over all of them unless you want me to, but you can see that the main expenditures are invested in our inmate training and counseling and our inmate education, as well as facility services and projects to better the facilities for our inmate population.
Excuse me, Chief, Supervisor Serna has a conundrum question.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. And forgive me, Chief, if I've, I'm beating you to the punch here on the conclusion of this slide, but if I heard you correctly in some past comments, anything that is not expended can be used to improve the jail facilities as well as to pay for personnel?
Correct. Personnel that are, I guess, hired to, for special programs that benefit the inmates.
Okay, so by my accounting, that, you're, there's over $5 million, at least in terms of the 21-22 budget or accounting, that could go towards those purposes, correct?
Correct.
So I guess my question with regards to the expenditures is, what, what's in place that caps any of this? So for instance, inmate education at $196,431. Is there a reason why there couldn't be additional education opportunities provided at additional costs, especially if we have in excess of $5 million that is otherwise going elsewhere? The same could be said for recreation, you know, social services, which this, I don't know how to interpret this, but only less than $3,000 is used for social services. And I'm not issuing, I'm not, I'm not offering these remarks as criticism. I'm offering these remarks because I want to understand, is there a way that we should be looking at enhancing all of these services, opportunities, however you want to describe them, especially given the fact that the bulk of the money is not being used principally for these purposes?
Yes, Supervisor, thank you for that question. So we're always looking for new and novel programs and ideas to benefit the inmate population. I guess the answer to your question would simply boil down to the inability to staff as is being experienced all over the place. So a lot of these programs just simply cannot find the people for it, and then in combination with the inmates that qualify for specialty programs. But we're always looking for new opportunities to even create more above and beyond what we have.
Sure, okay. No, and, and I, I understand that, but it seems a little, I guess, ironic that the bulk of this, if it's not being spent, can be used for personnel. So if you're telling us, well, it's really just, it's not the money, it's the fact you just can't find people, which is kind of the response we're getting for a lot of things these days. It seems to me, and I guess now I'd turn to our executive team, that, especially when it comes to social services, and I'm not sure what that entails here, but it's an extraordinarily low amount of what appears to be investment in that particular area. Can we, or should we, look at a better way, an enhanced way, of maximizing these revenues in these various areas, including the fact that there may be some costs, there probably will, would be some costs with trying to find more personnel to enhance these programs? But it seems to me, if the good majority of the funds just aren't being used here, we can and should be looking at a better way to do that. I don't know, Anne, if you have any thoughts on that, or if Siobhan or Eric likewise have anything to, to offer?
Actually, I would kick it back to Chief Deputy Donelli and maybe Eric Jones. The, I, I do understand, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that space is also an issue for programming, which, and we've been talking about space and the jail for quite some time yet. So we're always looking at new ways, and I'd be happy to engage in that conversation.
When it comes, and I'm looking forward to the, the response, but as far as I, I heard from the chief is that this can, this, this fund can be used actually for improving the facilities as well. So I, I know probably finding space in the jail is extraordinarily expensive, but there too is an opportunity where if space is really the limiting factor, finding personnel is a limiting factor. Perhaps what we look at is a, maybe a long-term dedicated investment of these funds on both of those fronts, so that in years to come, we have more of the revenue going towards kind of the essential designated programming that's envisioned by the enacting legislation that directs these funds to those purposes, if that makes any sense.
Absolutely. And I should also note that, and I hate to use the excuse of COVID, but it is a reality in that the last few years, we haven't been able to get some of our staff that are contracted for the, for this recreation and whatnot in, and our inmate population has been neither isolated or quarantined, et cetera. They've been in their cells more, they're ordering more commissary. When they come out, they're making more phone calls. So the revenue continues to go up during these periods of time. So we anticipate with COVID hopefully going away in the near future, that this will all start to balance out a little better as well.
And is some of this, some of these expenditures, Chief, are they being staffed with outside, perhaps, private or nonprofit sector personnel as opposed to county? I'm thinking the construction training program, for instance.
Yes, and I'll, I'll get into that in a, in a future slide, but the, the short answer is yes.
Okay, very good.
And if I may, through the chair, add?
Yes, go ahead.
So Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive Public Safety and Justice, and I, I do see, we saw the timeline as the Inmate Welfare Fund Committee meets, which is coming up, to look at further future expenditures. And I think it might be a good opportunity, knowing there's some surplus in the fund. As we are examining both the capital improvement projects that we discussed back on December 7th and 8th, as well as other programming changes, there may be opportunities to use some funding in either of those areas in the future.
Great, thank you. Thank you, and I see we have Supervisor Hume also in the queue.
I'll wait till the end, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor. Go ahead, Dan, Chief.
The, the next slide shows are change in the financial position with a net operating gain of $5 million. And that, again, was due to the increased commissary, increased phone calls. I should say that as far as the phone calls go, we did reduce the amount or the cost per minute from 21 cents down to 7 cents, which accounted for a change of 52% loss in the revenue. However, the calls increased by 37%, and the minutes increased by 42.5%. So that accounts for the revenue from the phone calls. Supervisor Serna, to your point, here are some of the staff that are employed by the IWF, although some of them are county employees. The rec techs, the supervising rec techs, records officers, some of them are outside of the county. We work with chaplains, we work with a tattoo removal company that comes in there to remove tattoos for future employment opportunities. We also work with WellSpace Health, which is instructional services designed to help inmates learn coping skills and assist them in seeking and securing gainful employment. So there's a multitude of entities that we, we do work with that are paid from the inmate welfare fund. One-time reduction to the program. We did absorb 1.700, or $1.7 million into AB 109 when we steered some personnel from the inmate welfare fund to the more applicable AB 109. And then the training and counseling, we spent $262,000. Inmate education, $196,000, and recreation, nearly $70,000. So some, some projects that we're looking to complete in the future, the, the cameras in booking, medical, and the perimeter areas of both facilities need a lot of work, and they need continual maintenance. So we're figuring about $350,000 is going to be necessary for that. And then contracting further with WellSpace to provide those instructional services to our inmates. And we have issued a new RFP with additional community-based organizations for inmate reentry services to get them better acclimated for when they are eventually, hopefully, released from jail. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll save the majority of my comments for offline briefing and future meetings or when I have more of an opportunity. But I did have some of the concerns that were aired by my esteemed colleague Supervisor Serna, given that the reading of the background is that the IWF should go primarily to the welfare and benefit of the inmates, then to facilities improvements. But I do recognize that obviously improving the facilities is of benefit and welfare to the, to the inmates as well. I'm more curious in how the numbers of the slideshow jibe with the five-year reporting in Attachment 3, and particularly if you, if the slide where you, you talked about the total expenditures totaling just over $2 million with the facilities and services projects of almost $1.3 million. When I look at the Attachment 3 for Fiscal 20 Year 22, 21-22, I only see the 1.287 for facilities improvements listed. I don't see these other expenditures captured. Is there a reason for that, or am I not? I, I'd looked it over two or three times to try and figure out why it wasn't jibing, and I couldn't come to a reasonable explanation.
Taking a look here.
The net income shows the same of 5.454, but I don't see the almost, you know, $900,000 beyond the facilities improvements captured. And, and again, this is my own nerdiness trying to figure out the numbers. It's not any kind of criticism or...
I guess you can look and see are those expenditures, where are they captured in the other fiscal year columns, right? Or are they not included in those either?
I guess the best answer, if I could, was to take a deeper dive into it and get you an answer with our, the people that actually, I was not good at math in high school, so...
And you were told there'd be no math today, so I appreciate that.
Right, right, I guess I failed the test on that one, but...
While you're looking that up then, and maybe you have this answer at your disposal here today, if not, I would also appreciate that, is why such a dramatic decrease in the reporting of operating expenses looks like from FY '19 to '20 to FY 2021, and then carried over into the most recent FY. over into the most recent FY. Went from a little over 3 million down to less than a million.
Yeah, so from here to here. Yeah, we'll definitely get you an answer for that as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Hume. So you're okay getting that maybe offline in a separate discussion? Okay, seeing no other comments from my colleagues, I will, yeah, I want to join the Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Hume, and some of these, these figures kind of jumped out at me as well in some of these categories, and I appreciate you explaining it. I really hope that we will be able to devote more resources to some of these areas when we have more staffing and certainly space, I understand that's an issue as well. One question I had for you, Dan, is do, as part of the committee efforts, do we look at other similarly situated counties just to see, hey, are we way off, or are we similar in how we expend funds out of our IWF?
Yes, and I just, I got confirmation from the committee chair there, but yes, they, I assume they look at other various counties and other entities to see if we're doing things similarly.
Okay, and so I join with Supervisor Hume in terms of some of these follow-up. I, I'd like to follow up to see, maybe see some of that, how, you know, maybe Alameda County, Riverside County, Santa Clark County, how, how we kind of compare in our expenditures with the inmate welfare funds, and that would be, that'd be helpful to me, so. Follow up with that, thank you. Supervisor Frost, yeah.
Chair Desmond, is it possible to copy all of us on the report back?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, well, this is, this is a receiving file. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comments.
Okay.
Let me just do one more check.
Well, then that concludes. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're going to move to the Consent Matters, items 2 through 40.
Yeah, so now we're moving on to your Consent Matters, 2 through 40, and I only have one note, that's for item 6.
Item 6, you need to read that.
Yeah. You're introducing an ordinance amending 2.61.090 of the Sacramento County Code related to the delegation of authority in accepting revenue contracts. You're waiving full reading and continuing to January 24th for adoption.
Okay, thank you. Then I will turn to my colleagues, see if anybody has any comments or questions on any consent items. I see Supervisor Hume.
Newbie strikes again. I apologize. And normally I won't have to dig in on a consent calendar, but I had a condensed week for briefing, so I do have a couple of questions, don't want any item to be polled, but I was just curious on, and if appropriate staff is not here to ask these, I will take the responses offline, but I just want to get them while they're front of mind. So on item 13, the Declaration of Contest Results, I was just curious...
Let's have Matt Clark read the item to the record.
Item 13 is the Declaration of Contest Results for the November 8th, 2022 general election.
Sure, and in looking at the report out on the manual tallied sampling that was done, it looked like the sampling was almost 10% of the total polling place or provisional ballots filed, and less than 3% of the mail-in ballots. I was just curious why that sampling was done at that ratio. Again, if it can happen offline, that's, that's fine. And then if you would call item...
I see Supervisor Hume, I see our county exec, do you have a response?
Yes, I just want to say, Supervisor Hume, we will have to get back to you on that, and we will do so.
Great, appreciate it, thank you. And then if our clerk would read item 17, please.
Item 17, approved recommendations for organizations to receive grants in connection with the Sacramento County's American Rescue Plan Act Arts and Nonprofit Cultural Grants Project.
And so I first wanted to say that this is something that, you know, I think is fantastic, where we're able to, to get money down to organizations that are doing good work in the community. I'm curious, this was ARPA money, so that's obviously a one-time windfall, but it sounded like in reading the staff report that it, the amounts to each group were determined from previous allocations. Was that a previous allocation of ARPA money, or is this a program that is normally carried out through county expenditures? And then my second part of that question would be, how are the amounts determined as far as what would be awarded to each group, because it was literally down to the penny?
So I am guessing, and we will validate this for you in a follow-up, is that folks were given what they applied for? That's my understanding of that, and we do have an ongoing program for the arts. This is an expansion of that with the ARPA money, but we'll get back to you with exactness on those answers.
Very good, thank you.
And, and, excuse me, I know Troy Givens came down, if he had anything to add, or...
Thank you, I didn't realize Troy was still here.
Outgoing Economic Development Director and coming...
Yes, come on.
Troy Givens with the Department of Economic Development. That is accurate, and we do augment these funds. These recipients are cultural arts awards. So to your earlier question, this is an augmentation of a program that is funded through TOT on an annual basis.
And is that done as a part of the budget, or is there a separate...
Comes as part of the budget.
Okay, thank you. And I had a third question, but I'll go ahead and table it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. And on this item, before we move away, thank you, I just want to thank staff for, I had a few questions yesterday about this, so thank you for giving me that information about the number of other organizations that had applied that did not receive a grant. So that's it for, okay, for consent items.
With that, I would move consent if it's the appropriate time.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any public comment on consent?
We do not, and so I'm going to go ahead and close the phone comments as well.
No public comment. Thank you, please vote.
Unanimous vote. And now you are ready for your off-agenda comments, and at this time, I do not have any off-agenda comments.
Okay, terrific, and please close off-agenda comments. We will, for the foreseeable future, keep that as the first item on the agenda in, in subsequent board meetings.
Correct.
Okay, then, I believe there's no further business for this morning other than closed session.
You have closed session.
We have closed session upstairs, and then we will reconvene at 2:00 PM in open session.
Yes, thank you.
And I will call this meeting back to order and ask our clerk to call the roll.
Okay, good afternoon Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. We'll move right on to item 45, our first afternoon item.
Yes, this is the fiscal year 2023-24 budget priorities.
Okay, thank you, and it looks like we have Amanda to kick things off. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Good afternoon, Chair Desmond, members of the board. I'm Amanda Thomas, the county's chief fiscal officer, and in a moment, I'll be handing it over to Dave Metz from FM3 Research to discuss the budget priority focus groups that FM3 conducted on behalf of the county. And then I'll follow with a presentation of the recommended budget priorities for the fiscal year 2023-24 budget. But before I hand it over to Dave, I wanted to provide some brief background on our community outreach and engagement for the county's budget, and then I'll provide some more detail on specific efforts during my presentation. As most of you know, in June 2021, the board approved a community outreach and engagement plan that included conducting a professional public opinion poll of county residents to understand their, their priorities for the county's budget. FM3 conducted that survey in November 2021, and the results indicated overwhelmingly that residents' top priority was addressing homelessness and related issues, including behavioral health and housing affordability. Additionally, the conditions of streets and roads stood out as an issue of concern for unincorporated area residents. These survey results helped shape the budget priorities that were adopted by the board leading up to the recommended budget for fiscal year 2022-23. So following up on the November 2021 survey and heading into the fiscal year 23-24 budget process, FM3 conducted focus groups of county residents in November of 2022, which, as you'll hear from Dave during his presentation, really reinforced and aligned with the key themes that we heard from residents in the survey. And in addition to informing the budget priority recommendations that will be before you today, the information gathered in these focus groups will also help inform a second survey of residents' budget priorities that's planned for the fall of 2023, heading into the 2024-25 budget process. So with that, that brief background, and if there aren't any questions at this point, I will turn it over to Dave Metz from FM3 to discuss the focus groups in more detail. And if we could pull up FM3's presentation, and then at the conclusion of Dave's presentation, I'll be back to discuss the recommended budget priorities.
Great, thank you, Amanda. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you very much, Chair, and members of the board, and members of the public. I'm Dave Metz with FM3 Research, and I'm pleased to be with you today to talk about the findings of the focus groups that we conducted in November to speak with residents of the county and understand their priorities as it relates to the county budget. As Amanda mentioned, the focus groups were intended as a follow-up to the survey that we conducted in November of 2021, but it gave us an opportunity to ask more open-ended questions, to talk to a smaller group of residents in much greater depth, and understand why they think what they do, and some of the understandings and information, and potentially gaps in information that underlies some of their opinions. So I'm going to walk through a series of some of the key findings of those sessions, and we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have. So the, the data I'm sharing here comes from four sessions that we conducted with a total of 36 residents of Sacramento County on November 1st and 2nd. We held them at Elliott Benson Research, which is located just down the street here. They're the sort of most prominent focus group hosting facility here in Sacramento. And we segmented the respondents into four separate groups, each of which had eight to 10 people. One group was solely residents of incorporated cities, one was residents of unincorporated areas, and then the other two groups were segmented by income, sampling respondents countywide, but with one group consisting of those who were in households that were below the federal poverty level, excuse me, and then one consisting of residents who were above that level. You'll see there's a shaded color in each of the four boxes here representing these four groups. Throughout the presentation, we include a few quotes from the participants that just give you some examples of the kinds of things they said in their own words, and those sort of color-coded boxes there will help you sort of sort out which, participants in which groups were saying what. We should note that anybody who was an employee of the county itself, or had a household member who was, was included, excluded from participation in the sessions. Now, it is always important to remember, when we're talking about qualitative research like this, that it is very different from the survey results that we shared with you roughly a year ago. When we're doing a survey, we're talking to a random sample of all residents of the county. We're talking to a large number of people, we're asking them a smaller number of questions, but because we're talking to a large random sample, we can generalize what they tell us to all residents of the county with some statistical precision. We can't do that here. We talked to 38 people, and no matter how carefully we chose them to be demographically diverse and representative of the county, ultimately their opinions are just the opinions of those 38 individuals. But as Amanda noted, it was very, very consistent with what we saw in the survey data a year before. So I think what they told us, even if we can't sort of assign a statistical value to it, does help to explain some of the thinking that we did see in that statistically valid survey earlier, and helps us to understand why they think some of the things that they think. So first, just to sort of get to the bottom line here, six key findings coming out of the focus group sessions. It is probably not surprising, even if it may be somewhat disappointing, that the residents had absolutely no understanding of the county budget and how it's assembled, and frankly, even what county government's primary responsibilities are. These participants are in no way unique in that regard. It is, I think, the case wherever we do this kind of research all over California, where any individual is part of perhaps a city, a county, a school district, a special district, regional governments, state government, knowing where the lines are drawn and who's responsible for what, for people who are not immersed in public policy every day, is understandably something that isn't intuitive to them. So we asked them, for example, if they could name their county supervisor, two of the 36 could. And again, that's just a very typical situation that we see in, in most communities here in California.
Which, which two?
District 4, actually, both of them. So as we saw in the survey, homelessness was the dominant concern for the participants. Everything, when we asked about issues facing the county, things they wanted county government to do, it really all centered on the issue of homelessness. And that was the lens through which they kind of evaluated whether they thought government, local government writ large was succeeding or failing in providing its services. Following behind that, the other two key issues were crime and the cost of living broadly. Obviously, inflation is a major concern, but the cost of housing was the main thing that people talked about, is the thing that was really the, the biggest strain on their pocketbooks. We had a fairly detailed exploration of the topics of poverty and food insecurity, especially because we had a group of participants who were themselves lower income, and while there was recognition that those are significant issues in the county, they were not seen as being, providing quite the same level of financial stress as the cost of housing does. We talked about county infrastructure. Generally speaking, when we mentioned infrastructure, people right away thought of roads, and as we saw in the survey, their perceptions of the condition of, of roads were mixed, especially when we sort of focused them on those that the county is actually responsible for maintaining. Conversely, the other aspect of, of county infrastructure that they were most focused on were parks, and they were very pleased, by and large, with the county park system, and thought that it was in good shape and was a significant asset and contributor to the county's quality of life. So with that overview, a little bit more detail on each of these findings, first with the sort of big picture questions that we started the sessions with. We asked the respondents, first of all, what they liked most about living in Sacramento County, and it was not hard for them to come up with things that make this a good place to live. A lot of them talked about the location, being sort of in a central location which made it easy to get to just about any part of Northern California, and what it has to offer, from the mountains to the oceans. Having a strong economy here, having relatively good weather compared to other areas also were things that people pointed to. Their main frustrations related to the cost of living. Many of them said this used to be relatively affordable as a community compared to other parts of Northern California, but they felt that in recent years, it was starting to look more like the Bay Area in terms of the, the way that the cost of living had increased, and in particular, the cost of housing. Many of them attributed that to people moving from the Bay Area, as the cost of living there had gotten out of hand, and, and people are sort of migrating more east and, and driving up housing prices in, in this part of the state. Homelessness really was the central concern that they all talked about. We'll talk in a few minutes about some of the more detailed opinions that they offered on that subject. There was also increased concern about crime and violence that many of them noted. A lot of the examples they provided were property crime, car break-ins, more frequent burglaries, and, and things like that, which they saw as affecting most parts of the county, not necessarily just certain neighborhoods. We asked people to tell us what they knew about county government and the services it provides, and most of them readily acknowledged that they knew relatively little about it, and sort of where the line was drawn between services the county provides and those that their city might provide. People who lived in the unincorporated areas of the county, not surprisingly, who rely on the county directly for more basic local services, were, had a somewhat greater understanding of the county's responsibility. When we asked them about the county budget, and asked them to just sort of hazard a guess as to what the size of the county budget was, most of them were way off. People were offering figures in the tens of millions or the hundreds of millions. Again, we see the same thing when we ask about the state budget or the federal budget. These numbers just get so large so quickly that the public doesn't really have a, a sense of scale for it. And they also weren't sure exactly how the budget was constructed. They assumed that it was a political process at some level, that elected officials and county supervisors were the ones that were making the final decision, but they weren't sure how open and public the process was, whether this is something where there are hearings and draft budgets and public debate, or whether it's something that gets settled behind closed doors and then sort of announced to the public afterwards. None of them had ever indicated, except for a few people who had very specific issues where they were hoping that some project or service would get funded, and maybe had written a letter or something in support of that desire, none of them had participated in a process where they sort of were aware of how the county budget was being put together. So to give them a sense of the decisions that county policymakers face when putting the budget together, we had the respondents do an exercise, where we gave them $100 of hypothetical county budget money, and six categories across which it could be spent, and then asked them to divide that money, and just sort of do a budgeting exercise. We told them they could put all $100 on one service if that's where they thought the investment should go, that they could divide it up between them any way that they felt was appropriate. And you'll see here, the total funding that was allocated to each of these services across all of the, the groups, and then the average per respondent put in each category. The first thing I should note is that many of the participants said, this is really hard. Will you give us more money? Will you give us more money?"
Welcome to our world.
And they understood that, you know, looking at everything on this list, there was nothing that they really wanted to short. You'll see parks and environmental protection at the bottom. I noted at the beginning that people said, "We really think the parks are in good shape. We really love them." For that reason, they were inclined to spend less money on it, but they didn't want the parks to lose the quality that they have right now. And so there were a few participants who just put nothing on it. And so this idea that you really need to spend a little something on everything in order to maintain the quality of life while also addressing the things that they saw as more acute problems right now, crime, cost of living, and homelessness reflected in those top three items, they were very aware of that tension, as they were forced to sort of allocate the money.
Dave, excuse me, before you go to the next slide, Supervisor Kennedy is...
Thank you, Chair. Back, yeah. So on the parks, and that's the second time you've hit on that subject, was there differentiation? I mean, did you dive deep into, did they know what county parks were as opposed to special districts' parks, as opposed to city parks?
We did. We first asked them that question. Can you give us some examples of county parks? And many of them found it hard to do so. They weren't certain. But then we provided them with a map and said, "Here are the parks that are part of the county park system," and everybody was able to look at it and say, "Oh, yeah, I love that one. Here's one that I go to a lot." And so then, having sort of that grounded understanding of, okay, these are the specific locations we're talking about, that's where the discussion sort of went on from there.
So is this taking into account other parks, or did you come to this conclusion after they did that?
We came to that, this exercise was done before we had that clarifying exercise. So, yes, they may have not had a totally clear impression of what county parks are, but I would say, once we showed them the map, it wasn't like things changed dramatically.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So just a little bit about the way that the participants sort of worked this out and decided how they were going to allocate money, because obviously, budget priorities is sort of the central goal of this exercise. Public safety was first on the list, not necessarily because they saw it as the most acute problem facing the county right now, but because they thought it was, securing public safety was kind of a precondition for success on everything else, that if public safety is adequately funded, that helps to address things like homelessness, as well as addressing some of the crime concerns that they have. Safety net services also ranked relatively highly. This was probably the one county service that most people recognized the county is sort of the leading provider for, and because of their understanding of how this is a very, very tough time for families to make ends meet, there was a lot of sympathy for people in the county who were struggling financially, and the participants wanted to make sure the safety net was available to them. Seniors and families with children were the people that were most often mentioned as the ones that they were hoping would be helped through those kinds of investments.
Dave, let me interrupt you. Supervisor Serna has a comment or question.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So was there a agreed-upon definition of public safety that either the survey providers gave as a statement, or that the participants understood collectively in agreement that public safety is X?
Yeah. Before we started this exercise, after hearing their impressions of what the county's responsibilities were, we gave them a detailed explanation of what services the county provides, including what public safety services the county supports. So they had that in mind as they were making these decisions. They didn't have the list of county parks yet to sort of know what those individual facilities were, but this was within the realm of, these are the public safety services that the county provides.
Okay, so I understand that that seems to be a fairly generalized response, though. So, for instance, I, and I've been consistent since on this board, that for me, public safety is much broader than simply the sheriff's department and services they provide, probation and services they provide, and special district firefighting service providers. To me, public safety includes child welfare, public health, a whole host of other things. So was this a kind of a more standard, traditional definition that was agreed upon, that it's badges and fire hoses, or what was it?
Yeah, we didn't, when we were doing this exercise, they saw the list of descriptions that you see on the left-hand side. Before that, they had seen a full list of the services the county provides, including everything you just listed, as those things that may not be thought of as traditional badges and fire hoses, but do contribute to public safety. And in the discussion of these investments, many of the participants mentioned some of those things that you just listed, as things that they would consider, you know, if they had to sort them into one of those six buckets, that was the bucket where they thought they belonged.
Got it. All right, thank you.
Yeah. It's interesting, I mean, obviously, given the dominance of homelessness as a concern, that it ranked third on the list of things that people said they would want to spend money on. In the survey questions we asked a year ago, it was a clear number-one priority, and it was a different choice framework than what we're offering people here. Part of the reason for that was people felt like if you're adequately investing in public safety and in safety net services, those should go toward helping address some of the root causes that lead people to be homeless. So those investments are going to have some benefit for homelessness, even if it isn't sort of the stamp that has been placed on that spending as its direct purpose.
So they were, excuse me, Dave, so they're kind of intuitively understanding that there is an overlap there with a lot of those?
100%. Yeah, and many of them hastened to sort of explain their choices, as saying, "Don't get me wrong, I really want to address homelessness, but it seems to me that if we're spending money in these other areas, it ought to have some benefits in helping to relieve that problem." There was also a sense that this is something that local government and state government writ large had already spent a lot of money on. And so a refrain that many of the participants came back to was, well, they need to do a better job of spending the money that's already out there, as opposed to necessarily increasing the size of the pie.
Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. So to that point, do you think that the survey respondents had it, by the time they were asked about the ranking and where homelessness resides here as third, and as you noted, that ranks differently than the previous time this similar survey instrument was applied here, do you think that that is still an indication of some ambiguity in terms of who's responsible for addressing homelessness, whether it's cities and city councils, or the county and boards of supervisors?
Yes, I think it absolutely is supervisor. And about a month ago, we did a statewide survey where we asked people, because homelessness is the number-one concern for Californians as a whole, which level of government do you think should bear most responsibility for addressing homelessness, federal, state, or city and county? State was the number-one answer. About half of Californians said that they thought the state should be taking the lead. About a quarter said the federal government, and a quarter said local government. And what we've seen in other research on this subject is people know that that's where the money is, that ultimately, local governments aren't going to be able to make significant investments unless they have support from the state. And so by and large, that's where people look first. But they, but as you're saying, there's a sense that everybody has a part to play, and broad dissatisfaction with the role that everybody is playing at this point.
Was there a deeper dive into city-county, or is it just at the local government level?
I mean, by this point in the discussion, we were clearly focusing on the county. I don't recall many of the participants saying, "No, the county should be doing this, the city should." The participants had a view that it's a regional problem, I mean, to a large extent, it's a state problem, but here in Sacramento, that it's not something that just stays within city lines or within incorporated areas, that it's fluid, and that, you know, there needs to be a regional eye in terms of thinking about how to solve it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Last couple of notes on this slide, economic development issues. We talked about people, a number of people weren't sure what role the county might play there, but at the same time, just given the condition of the economy and concerns about the cost of living, anything that government can do to help encourage the retention and attraction of good-paying jobs was something that people were supportive of. And then, as we've talked about with parks, they ranked it low, but they hastened to add that it was not out of any lack of affection for the parks or of belief that they shouldn't be maintained in their current condition, but simply that they perhaps face less challenges than many other service areas that we had asked about here. So following that broad discussion about the budget, we had some deeper dives on a number of specific issue areas, and one of them was homelessness. We spent a lot of time talking about the factors that lay behind the participants indicating that this was what they saw as the most important problem facing the local area. We talked about the factors that cause homelessness, and all of the participants, I think there was a broad consensus that there is no single factor, there is no switch one can flip that is going to solve the problem. There are lots of root causes that contribute to it. The two that they mentioned most often were substance abuse and untreated mental health issues, but they recognized also that housing costs, poverty, low wages, all of these kinds of things are contributing to them as well. For that reason, when we asked them, "Is this a problem we can fix? Is this something we can really look to government and say, 'You should be able to solve this.'" A lot of them said, "No, it's probably not something that can't be solved. Those roots are so deep and so diverse that it's something where we can make progress over time, but it's probably not something that we can realistically expect that we're going to eliminate." For that reason, they were very enthusiastic about doing a lot of things at once, trying to address all of these multiple root causes in whatever ways we can, with whatever tools we have available. Because they saw substance abuse and untreated mental health issues as the sort of biggest drivers, those were the areas where they were most enthusiastic about making some additional investments, to try to help people from becoming homeless in the first place. And this was something a number of them emphasized. Preventing homelessness rather than solving it once people have already lost their home and are on the street, for many of them, seemed like sort of the best way to try to attack the problem. When we talked about housing itself, that ultimately, a solution probably for homelessness means people need homes, should we be building or providing new housing? That was something where there was a lot of division among the participants in terms of how effective they thought it might be. Many had a very strong perception that people who are experiencing homelessness, in some cases, it's a choice, that they have decided that for a variety of lifestyle factors, they aren't in a position where they would, even if a home was made available to them, want to be there. Other participants rejected that entirely and said, "No, absolutely. Anybody would want to be, have a safe and secure place to live." But this idea of building new housing as a part of the solution had much less of a consensus behind it than did addressing those substance abuse and mental health issues.
Dave, I have a question. I'm curious, and you're, either FM3's other work you do in other counties, or in your discussions with other groups that do these kinds of focus groups and polling, is this pretty consistent with what you've seen in other communities in the state?
Very.
So there's nothing out here that's an outlier to you in terms of what you saw? I'm just curious.
I would say the frustration, as high as it is here, is somewhat less acute than what we see in San Francisco, or Oakland, or Portland, for example. But in terms of what people perceive the causes to be and their support for the solutions, it's very, very similar. And I would note, when we talk about this frustration when it comes to providing new housing, we've heard this in San Francisco, we've heard this in Portland, all of those communities voted multiple times to tax themselves at the local level to build new housing. So it's not that they, voters at large, don't think that's an important part of the solution, it's just something that they think is probably secondary to addressing some of the other root causes that might lead someone to become homeless in the first place.
Okay. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. So kind of to add to the inquisition about attitudes about the homeless themselves, was there anything offered by the respondents that suggests to FM3 that there is any kind of waning empathy about those folks that are homeless, and whether or not they see them as being unable or uninterested more likely in being a part of the change of circumstance themselves? Is that something that you see over time that is occurring?
Yep. So I will say, from previous polling in Sacramento County, we have seen something similar to what we've seen statewide, which is when we ask people whether their concern about homelessness is primarily driven by compassion for people who are experiencing homelessness, or by a sense that homelessness itself is a threat to public safety, public health, and the economic vitality of the community, they split almost right down the middle. Most people will say both, if given the opportunity to say both, and there is a big ideological split there. More conservative respondents tend to say the latter, more left-leaning respondents choose to say the former. Your question is whether that's been changing over time, and again, in this statewide survey that we conducted last month, we have a question which essentially poses that choice and says, which should be the higher priority, providing services and support to help people who are experiencing homelessness, or enforcing laws to ensure that people who are posing some kind of a threat are off the streets? And that has been moving a little bit more in that direction toward enforcement over the course of the last year. But the public is still fairly divided on that question, and overwhelmingly, if you give them the choice to say both. When there is a small minority of people who are causing violence, or setting fires, or intimidating people, that they should be dealt with through stricter enforcement, but for what most people perceive as the vast majority of people experiencing homelessness, they need support, they need services, they need help getting back on their feet. And so policy proposals that offer to do both of those things together tend to be the ones that they're most supportive of.
Has there been any other survey instrument that FM3 has offered, whether statewide or local, other jurisdictions, that is a little more surgical, in that you're probing the respondents' attitudes about the what-ifs around the offering of services that are refused? And so does, you know, once you offer housing, once you offer mental health, substance abuse disorder treatments, and they still say, "Thanks, but no thanks," is there any data you can offer about the attitudes of the respondents with regards to that particular situation?
There is, but the public is very split on this question, because as soon as you walk them down the sort of chain of consequences, they, what sounds like sort of a strong desire on their part starts to unravel a little bit. If you ask, "Should people be required to accept housing if offered?", they will say yes. And then if you say, "But if they decline, should they be arrested and jailed? Should the police enforce that on them?", they will say no. And so then we're sort of left with the same conundrum that we started with.
Well, I would hope that the question isn't the "if then then" proposition that is only measured or offered relative to incarceration as the only option, because that would seem to suggest to me that it's a foregone conclusion that they're always going to say, "Of course not, they're not going to go to jail." I mean...
You're right, and I, I'm sorry, I sort of offer those two just to show you how opinion can shift dramatically, the more detail and explanation you provide. You can do a whole survey on the range of options that might be offered in that space between those two positions. And I simply say that to mean that the public hasn't thought through all of those, the tough questions that sort of fall in that space.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate this line of question, and I won't belabor the point too much, but I'd just say that it is telling to me that the attitude of people from whom we're soliciting their opinions is antithetical to the policy at the federal, state, and even local level regarding addressing root causes versus supportive housing. That's just an opinion here, neither here nor there. I noticed that this slide is not color-coded. Was this a general sentiment across the four different categories of respondents?
Yes, these are bullet points just describing the overall sort of thrust of the responses from the participants. Where we have those color-coded slides, those are direct quotations from individuals within the session.
Okay.
So this is our summary assessment of what people told us, rather than any words coming directly out of their mouths.
But would you say that these sentiments hold fairly true across all four categories?
Yes, with obviously a lot of variation, but to the extent that there was a sort of a, I wouldn't say a total consensus, but sort of a majority opinion, it's what's represented here.
Very good, thank you.
So when we talked about the social safety net, there were, we had people go through a list of programs that the county either provides or could provide that might provide support to people who need it, and asked people to rank the relative importance they would assign to them. We're not focusing on the numerical responses here, because again, it's a small group and not statistically significant. But what we consistently saw were programs that provide support to children or to families with children, were the things that they tended to put at the top of the list. There were a number of programs that they tended to rank lower in relative terms. In most cases, we still had people telling us, "This is important, it's something we should do," but with just somewhat less urgency behind it. Support for food banks, for example, many of the participants assumed that food banks are getting philanthropic support, which might reduce the need for the county to support them. And then programs that provided cash aid to residents also tended to have less support than some of the others. In the focus group that consisted of low-income residents of the county, it was striking the degree to which childcare really emerged as a key priority, with many... degree to which childcare really emerged as a key priority, with many of the participants saying unless you have childcare, you can't really get back in the workforce. Unless you can get, can get back in the workforce, you really can't get on your, back on your feet economically. And today, even if you can find childcare, it is likely to be too expensive to pay for it on a relatively low-wage job. And that tension was something that a number of people pointed to as something that's really hard to get past unless there is support to make it easier for people to afford childcare. On the question of infrastructure, as I mentioned, we started out asking people when they think about infrastructure in Sacramento County, what comes to mind? Here, as in most places, the first thing that they mentioned was roads. When we asked them if they knew which roads were ones that the county maintained and which ones were roads that the city maintained, most of them didn't have a very clear idea. Those who live in unincorporated areas were much clearer on it, not surprisingly. We provided them with a map, which showed them sort of the, where the county roads are. When people saw it, they could very quickly point to it and say, oh yeah, this stretch here is really bad, they need to repave it, or there's a real bottleneck right here that they ought to do something about. People had very localized perceptions of where they thought the most acute problems were. But in general, as we saw in the survey, there was a strong desire for improvements to the road system. And there was also a sense, a number of participants mentioned this, that in their minds, roads in the more affluent areas of the county tended to be nicer, tended to be kept in better condition, in their perception, low-income communities tended to be neglected in terms of road maintenance. In contrast, when we talked about the park system, as we noted before, people thought the parks were generally in pretty good condition and a real asset and a jewel for Sacramento County. When we showed them the map and they were clear on which parks were county parks, most people could point to one that they said they visited or that they had positive experiences with. To the extent that people had ambivalence about the park system, it was not about the physical infrastructure as much as it was concerns about homelessness and about safety. And the American River Parkway was one that people mentioned very frequently, with a number of the participants, especially outside of the city of Sacramento, saying, I used to go there and spend time, but since the start of the pandemic, I have been hesitant to go down there because they perceived that it was less safe than it might have been before. But people, there was also, people were able to come up with a wide variety of different recreational activities that county parks support. There were people who were boaters, there were hikers, there were birders and wildlife viewers, all of whom said, oh yeah, this is a really great spot for that, and I'm glad it's something that the county provides for us. So that takes us to the overall conclusion of the conclusions coming from the sessions. And again, these are observations from the sort of 38 conversations that we had with these individuals. They shouldn't carry as much weight as what we saw in the survey data, but overall, they're very consistent. When we sort of had people at the end of the session say, all right, if you could send a message to Sacramento County about what it should be doing with the county budget, what would you want them to do? And this is after talking about it for two hours, so they've had a chance to, you know, sort of think through and learn a little bit and wrestle with some of the decisions that you on the, on the board are facing. But the priority that they assigned to public safety and social services was the thing that really stood out in the comments that they provided us at the end. Many of them saying that they thought that investments in those areas were going to address that central problem of homelessness that they most wanted to see taken care of. Supporting children and families, especially in the provision of some of these same kinds of social services, was a high priority for them. Mental health was something they pointed to, the connection to homelessness was there, but also a recognition that the mental health strains that all of us have experienced over the course of the pandemic have been particularly acute for young people, and that families may be needing additional assistance in that regard at this point. We had a few questions about how people, what would be the best way to get people information about the county budget? Let them know what's going on, give them an opportunity to provide feedback. And frankly, most people politely declined to, to sort of engage further on the topic. A lot of them said, if I wanted, if I want to learn about it, I'll, I'll Google it, I'll find out what's going on, I'll look at the newspaper. They didn't feel a sense that they needed to be directly involved. They said that hearing from their supervisor would be helpful because they thought that their supervisor would understand the issues that affect their part of the county and obviously is there to represent their interests. And when we asked them more generally about how they're getting their information, as you'll see in that final bullet, there were a mix of sources they pointed to, local news, social media. Far fewer of them said they read newspapers than would have been the case five or 10 years ago, with social media kind of picking up the slack as the primary way that they're getting local news, as well as sort of more formal and informal social networks within their neighborhoods or communities. Everything from next door to information they might get through networks at their children's schools and things like that. And again, that's consistent with what we see a lot of places where the, as there is sort of less resources being devoted to local newspapers and local media and local reporting, and with the advent of social media, the ways people get information about local government have become increasingly more diffuse.
Dave, Supervisor Turner has a.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't know if that you're this close to your final remarks or not, but.
That was it.
Okay, very good. All right. So I appreciate the presentation. It's always interesting to glean from focus groups what may be on the minds of our constituents. I'm wondering, though, you as the expert in the area of public opinion, how confident are you that what you've concluded from the focus groups is something that would likely or not be the same conclusion if you were to do a fully developed poll?
I'm pretty confident that it would be Supervisor for a number of reasons. Number one is the poll that we did for the county about a year ago, which showed pretty similar findings. Secondly, we have done a range of polling in Sacramento for, Sacramento County for other clients over the course of the last year, just given the political season that we've been in. And the findings of those polls are very consistent with what we've seen here as well. And as I will note, and as I mentioned in response to the Chair's question, most of these issues and the way the public is reacting to them, not drastically different here in Sacramento from what we're seeing in other big cities across California. So I'd be surprised if we saw something that was dramatically different in a survey than what we saw here. As you have noted through a number of your questions, there's lots of follow-ups we can ask, a lot of, you know, sort of more pointed questions that can be put to people. But I doubt it will be much different than the general thrust of what we got here.
For the respondents that are in cities, I think you said there's eight of them, do we know more geographic detail about what parts of which cities?
Yes. We have a list of where all the participants came from. For the folks who were in cities, reflecting the balance of the population, about half of them were from the city of Sacramento, and then the rest of them were from other cities. I think across all the sessions, every city was represented except Galton, Ileton potentially. So, I mean, in the, in the high-income and low-income groups also, obviously, we had both city and unincorporated participants there.
What about age and gender?
We had a mix. They were about 50-50 male and female, and, and looked for a range of ages as well.
And did you offer a gift card or cash?
We paid them cash, yeah.
Okay. All right. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Supervisor Hume, you still queued up? What's that?
It's all.
It's all, okay. All right. There's a button on there where you can take your name out. If you just hit the, hit the button again. Sorry. Okay, thank you very much, Dave. Any other comments or questions from board members?
Thank you.
And Amanda, I believe you had some, some additional remarks.
So there, there's actually a second PowerPoint presentation, and while that's getting pulled up, I will just take this opportunity to also thank Dave myself. I think it's really, really helpful and interesting information. I was disappointed, although not all that surprised, that not everyone is enthusiastic, is as enthusiastic about the county's budget as I am.
Well, let's keep doing this because I shudder to think people are getting educated about the budget from next-door posts.
Yeah.
Okay. So, so if we could get the second PowerPoint pulled up, and really just sort of following up on that discussion of, you know, what, what we heard in the focus groups and how that's consistent with what we heard from the survey last year, I'm now going to address the recommended budget priorities for the 2023-24 budget. So just in terms of background, and as I mentioned earlier, the board did adopt priorities for this current fiscal year 2223 budget back in December of 2021. And that was really following extensive community outreach and engagement, and I'm going to describe that a little bit more on the next slide. Those priorities guided department budget requests and then the county executives' budget recommendations with substantial new and expanded investments budgeted in the priority areas of homelessness and housing, behavioral health, and roads. And for roads, as, as many of you know, this year, we had $20 million of one-time general fund in addition to $20 million of general fund made available through ARPA revenue replacement, so an additional $40 million in roads funding this fiscal year. And then I'm going to go over some of the more detail on the recent investments in behavioral health and homelessness on the following slides. Given that the overall findings of the, the focus groups align with and reinforce the results of the 2021 survey and the key themes that have surfaced from other outreach efforts, our recommendation today is to continue focusing on the same priorities for the fiscal year 2324 budget so that we can continue building on the significant efforts that are already being implemented. And then, as I mentioned, we're planning for a second survey of county residents in 2023 that would lead into the 2425 budget process. So I mentioned the significant investments already being made in the priority focus areas and listed on this slide are major behavioral health investments made in recent years. I'd like to thank Tim Lutz and his team at Department of Health Services for putting this together. I'm not going to go into each of these in detail, but, you know, I did want to point out that if, if my math is right, I mean, this represents in total here about $250 million in new spending from a variety of, of funding sources, but really substantial amount on these new, new programs and investments. About $80 million of that is startup and facility costs for new programs being implemented, but the rest represents ongoing expenditures. So you can see really significant investments that we continue to build upon in this priority focus area. And then, similar to the previous slide, this is showing us the major investments in homelessness and housing initiatives in recent years. And thanks to Emily Halken and her team for preparing this, which shows at the top there, you can see about $50 million for the three new SafeStay shelters that have been approved by the board, and this includes both the facilities' costs as well as ongoing costs for services over a two-year period that provide services to about 400 people at any given point in time. And there are, as you can see, several other programs and efforts also listed here, some of which are ongoing annual commitments, others are funded with ARPA and shown over a two- or three-year spending period. I did want to point out that both this slide and the previous slide, you know, are by no means exhaustive lists of everything that we're doing, but they do highlight some of the largest dollar amount investments made in recent years and really show that substantial budget commitments are being made to the priority focus areas. I also wanted to highlight some of the key elements of the budget outreach and engagement plan that we began in the summer of 2021 and continue to build upon. So this includes key enhancements to public education, engagement, and transparency in the budget process, includes holding virtual public budget workshops. We did that both in October of 2021 and then just last month to provide an overview of the county's budget and budget process. For last month's workshops, we also included presentations from selected departments just to highlight the diversity of funding sources and operations across the county, and we plan to continue to build on that format for future workshops. We also produced a budget in brief, a high-level summary of the county's budget that's available on the website and just shows at a very high level and using charts kind of where the county's money comes from and how it is spent. And then we also have a web-based interactive Budget Explorer tool that allows users to drill into the county's budget and get more information. And then as part of this overall plan, these sort of budget transparency enhancements are coupled with outreach efforts in order to get input on the community's needs and priorities for the county's budget. So that includes outreach that's conducted by county departments with advisory boards and commissions in 2021. That outreach helped inform the questions that were included in the resident survey, and then departments also regularly get input from these bodies in formulating their budget requests. And then we've already discussed the, the survey that was conducted in 2021, and then the recent focus groups, and then our plan to conduct a second follow-up survey. So as I mentioned, we are recommending that the priorities that were adopted for the fiscal year 2223 budget also be adopted for the 2324 budget. And just as some background on the priority framework, the purpose of adopting the priorities now is really to guide the budget process for next fiscal year, which actually will start with our budget kickoff meeting next week, after which departments will begin working on their budget requests. The adopted priorities apply to the use of general fund discretionary resources, and that's in recognition of the fact that other resources have restrictions on their use that limit the board's discretion and the ability to apply priorities more broadly across funding sources. In order to maximize the use of discretionary resources, we will continue to recommend that costs will be funded first with the most restrictive funding sources. And then it's important to note that before establishing priorities for new or enhanced programs, the, the priority framework really first considers the counties, that the county must comply with certain obligations that require the use of discretionary resources and that a high priority should be placed on existing policy commitments. And the framework also recommends prioritizing maintaining existing service levels before recommending funding for new or enhanced programs. And then finally, it recommends that new or enhanced programs be focused on those most critical and urgent needs with the specific county-wide and unincorporated focus areas that are identified based on that input that we have received from the community. So consistent with the framework that I just described, the, the priorities that were adopted for the 2223 budget and that we are again recommending for the 2324 budget are shown here. The first is complying with the county's legal, financial, regulatory, and policy obligations, including providing mandated services, ensuring collection of revenues, and complying with the general reserves policy. The second is maintaining existing service levels budgeted for county programs, improving effectiveness and efficiency where possible, and limiting the extent to which reductions in categorical revenue are backfilled with discretionary resources. And the wording here with regard to effectiveness and efficiency really is intended to convey that while we want to maintain existing programs and service levels, that doesn't necessarily mean continuing to do things the way they've always been done. So we'll of course be looking for ways to improve service delivery and gain efficiencies. And then that wording with regard to categorical revenue is really intended to convey that in general, it is the county's practice not to backfill with discretionary resources, but we also recognize that sometimes in the interest of maintaining program service levels, that, that would be the recommendation. And then the third and final priority is funding new or enhanced programs that focus on the most critical and urgent needs with the following priority focus areas that were identified in the survey of county residents. So we have a county-wide focus area of addressing homelessness and its impact, including housing, mental health, and substance use, and then an unincorporated focus area of improving the condition of streets and roads. And the focus areas identified here are a reflection of what we heard from county residents about the most critical problems and issues for the county to address. And as discussed earlier, the county really has made substantial additional, additional investments in recent years that we would continue to build upon should additional resources be available. And then I just wanted to touch on a few additional considerations regarding the recommended priorities. So the first is that these priorities apply specifically, while these apply, while the priorities apply specifically to discretionary resources, they would also be considered in conjunction with recommended uses of other funding sources. So for example, housing and homelessness has also been identified as a top priority for the county's ARPA funding. So the recommended use of discretionary resources in that area would be considered in conjunction with ARPA funding recommendations. Consistent with our past recommendations and with our goal of ensuring a structurally balanced budget, we would continue to recommend that one-time funding sources such as fund balance would only be used for one-time costs to the greatest extent feasible. And then finally, the budget priorities approved today would be used to guide the requests that are developed by departments and ultimately the county executives' recommended budget for fiscal year 2324. And that would be the subject of the budget hearings in And that would be the subject of the budget hearings in June. And the intent is really that these priorities would provide guidance and alignment with regard to the budget recommendations and that the board, of course, would retain the authority to make budget decisions during those budget hearings in June. And that concludes my presentation. Happy to take any additional questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Amanda. Yes, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Chair. Amanda, so away from, and by the way, very good work, clearly thorough, but still limited in scope being that it's focus groups. So just as we go through the budget process, we are still going to solicit input from members of the public as well. Is that correct?
Correct. So as I mentioned, we did hold public budget workshops just last month in December, so that's one example of that. And then departments are also reaching out through their advisory boards and commissions as they are formulating their budget requests.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Any other comments or questions before we go to public comment?
I actually do have one quick question, Amanda. You know, we've had a lot of discussions here about sometimes how the perception of the county budget does not reflect the reality. And I know there have been some communications with members of the local media. Have we ever put out an offer to members of the local media to maybe host a workshop just to help educate them about Sacramento County's budget? Because I think that might be helpful as well. I mean, I know, I don't want to do anything suggesting that's going to take more of your time, Amanda, but I think that's important.
Well, we haven't specifically offered one just for the media, but it's my understanding the media was invited to the two public workshops that we had last, in November.
So yeah, so they were certainly well-publicized, and I think there was some media interest that our PIO fielded, so yes, yeah, I'm certainly invited, not specifically for the media, but invited to the public workshops.
Okay. That's certainly just something I think to keep in mind because I think that is a common theme, that it's, a lot of things I think are misrepresented about the county's budget.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm really glad you brought that up. I think it's an important point, and I would just say that as an example, I guess the most recent example of, I think, the unfortunate willingness of some media outlets to simply scratch the surface of their understanding of our budget process has really manifested itself in some of the, over the last six months or so, as it relates to, you know, the stories we've read about city-county responsibility on homelessness and simply writing a two-sentence statement that, well, the county has a, you know, $6.2 billion budget, they must have the resources, you know, end of statement.
So we...
Yeah. But my, so that to me is indication that there continues to either be a lack of understanding or perhaps even a willingness simply to gravitate towards, you know, being that cursory in referencing what is an extremely complicated exercise, an extremely complex document that takes months to develop. And if it continues, if we continue to see those editorials and those stories where there's this knee-jerk reaction to simply cite the total amount of the budget without reference to even depicting the general fund from, you know, other federal and state pass-throughs and other, you know, parts of the totality of our budgeting responsibilities, I think it's incumbent on us to be even more aggressive in inviting the media to better understand what it is we do over the course of January to the end of June.
Supervisor Serna, if I can comment on that, I don't disagree with you at all. In fact, I agree with you wholeheartedly, but I do want to let you know that as it relates to homelessness, the homelessness team, myself, Siobhan, Emily, Kim Nava, from communication standpoint, we actually spent an hour or more with the editorial board, and this very issue came up, and we did, in fact, explain that to them.
Good. Well, you know, I think then there's probably, we should expect then that no excuses, you know, involving plausible deniability on their part should be expected.
It doesn't mean we shouldn't do it again.
No, I understand.
Yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Okay, thank you, Amanda. I will now ask you, we have a public comment on this item?
We do not. There was one caller, but it looks like they dropped off, so I'll close the public comment.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board, see if there are any closing comments, Supervisor.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. If there's no further comment or questions by my colleagues, then I would move approval of the recommended budget priorities to be used in the development of the fiscal year 2324 recommended budget.
Okay, thank you, with a first and a second, and I see Supervisor Frost has her name in the queue.
I just wanted to quickly comment and say to our county executive, Ann Edwards, your public process seems to be working really well. Congratulations.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, and thank you, Amanda and David, for the presentation, and thank you for all of your work, and look forward to hearing back from you very soon. Okay, with that, we will move on to item 46.
And I would like to just let the board know that there's an interpreter, a Mandarin interpreter in chambers with the appellant, so I'm not sure if we'll need any time to set up anything, but we can start with the...
Staff.
Yes. So item 46, Doing Business As, I think it's Tooney Massage and Tooney Healthcare Center Request For Review Of Business License Revocation Of Special Business License And General Business License. Let me go ahead and read the licenses into the record. The special business license is SPB 12019-00315, and the business license is GNB 3210901138.
Okay, thank you, and I see we have Blake here to start the presentation.
Yeah, I think that they're having a council.
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair, Supervisors, Blake Sequer, Deputy County Counsel. The appellant in this matter is on the phone with Amanda with the Clerk's Board. I'm not sure what's going on yet. They're still trying to figure it out. If we can pass this for a few minutes, that would be preferred.
Okay, well, we could move on to our nominations, yeah, home ranks appointments, so let's just, we can do that. Move on, we'll come back to item 46.
And I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of the... Okay, so we'll get that together if we can help with getting that.
And we'll have an interpreter as well on the line, so get all that worked out. Okay, since we're still on the right timeframe, these are all 230 matters, so we can just move on, skip that for now, move on to item 47.
Okay, let me get the material for that.
Or we could go to 48 if that's easier for you, Flo. It depends how much time they're going to need.
Let's take the harder one and get it on out the way.
Okay, that's great.
Huh? Oh, no, give me one...
Just you wait.
Actually, give me, give me one second, I apologize.
So Chair, I just wanted to show you that if you tap on the person's name when they're in the queue, it goes off.
But I didn't, but I didn't want to, because I feel honest, I don't want to overstep my...
It's all confusing.
You're running for crayon.
Okay, so we're going to refer to the matrix that you have, and we'll start from the very top. And let me just get prepared on my end. Okay. So your first item is the Adult and Aging Commission. This is typically a chair or chair designee, and so I will defer to the board on what you want to do with that.
So I'd recommend my designee could be Vanessa McCarthy Olmsted.
Okay.
On the chair's behalf.
All righty. And then for the Area For Agency on Aging Governing Board, we wanted to make a note that Mr. Hume is assuming the office there for the District 5 seat. And then this would also be an opportunity for any of you to designate a alternate.
Would I be...
Pardon me, would I be able to do that at a later date? I've not solicited it. Okay, thank you.
We can bring this back for that. Okay, so we will continue this for the alternate. Moving on to the Cal ID Rand Board, so previously it was with Mr., Natoli was the member and Matt was his alternate, and so Matt was working with Sue Frost in District 4, and he's moved on to another position with the state, so I'm not sure how you guys want to handle that. So Mr. Hume, you could, this would be up to the board if anyone else wants to sit on that board, and then if you want to designate an alternate or not.
Yes, I would look to Supervisor Hume. Would you want to continue the D5 service on that?
I will be looking for an alternate.
And then identify an alternate, okay. How's that flow for now?
That's fine, we'll continue this one for the alternate.
Thank you.
Thank you, and noting on the record that you will be the member for that. There are no changes to the CSAC, and I did want to just make a note that for your CSAC board and your NACO appointments, we're able to do those in two-year rotation. However, I will report that to each of those organizations annually.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Capital Southeast Connector, so we were noting on here that Mr. Hume is taking that seat. That was previously Mr. Natoli, and Ms. Frost was the alternate on that. So as it stands, if you guys want to leave it that way, the membership must be an elected official. So do we want any changes on that? None, thank you. The County Leadership Advisory Committee, I'm going to leave that up to the board if you want to make any changes. Right now, that was Mr. Natoli, and so Mr. Hume is assuming that seat.
Was that Mr. Natoli given his role as chair?
Yeah.
I believe so, and I also will add, I don't believe in my two-year tenure this group has ever met.
I'm happy to take that one on then. He learns quickly.
Okay, so we will consider that one complete. And then moving on to the Criminal Justice Cabinet, this is also a chair or chair designee. So in your previous year, you all made a decision at the board that Supervisor Desmond would take that, so you are now the chair, so you can stay in that, or if you guys want to make a different decision, that's up to you.
I'm happy to stay on it unless someone else has a preference.
Yep.
Okay, we're leaving that the same. Okay, and just for the record, Supervisor Frost, you're the alternate, you'd like to remain?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The Delta Protection Commission, so Mr. Hume, you've assumed that seat, that was previously Mr. Natoli, so that's good. And then Mr. Kennedy, would you like to remain the alternate?
I would.
Okay, thank you. Freeport Regional Water Authority, so there really isn't a rhyme or reason in terms of the rotation, so I'll leave it to the board if you all want to keep it the same or make any changes. And Mr. Hume, you've assumed Mr. Natoli's seat by default.
And it borders our districts.
Right, I think that's the rhyme or reason.
Yeah.
Sorry, unofficially, I'll note that for the future. Are we leaving it the same?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Alternate?
I've never been to a meeting, but they always go, I guess, so I'm just happy to be on.
An alternate, okay, thank you, Ms. Frost. Okay, moving on, there are no changes to the First Five Commission. Now we're at the, I'm sorry, where are we? Oh, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. So Mr. Hume, you assumed the seat of Mr. Natoli, and Mr. Desmond, you are the alternate. Do you want to leave this the same?
I think this has been, the chair has served on this, so I'll take this one unless you have an objection.
No, I assumed it rode with the chair and vice chair.
Pat, alternate, are you okay as the alternate? We'll just swap, or?
I think it goes...
Oh, vice chair, sorry. Supervisor Kennedy is the alternate.
I was going to suggest that maybe we do that, that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Vice chair be the alternate then.
Okay.
Okay, so you're going to be the member?
Correct.
And this one doesn't require the rotation of the chair or vice chair, but we'll note it on the record that that's what we're starting this year. And then Mr. Kennedy will be the alternate. Thank you. And then moving on to page two, the Law Library Board Of Trustees, we just need you to reappoint, Ms. Travis.
I moved to reappoint Ms. Travis because she's doing an outstanding job.
Thank you. And moving on to the Lower American River Conservancy Program Advisory, currently Mr. Serna, Mr. Desmond, and Mr. Hume are sitting on that board and want to know if you want to make any changes? None? And then the designee is Mr. Richard Barber, so are we leaving that the same, too?
I know he moved away, I think, out of state.
Okay, so let's continue this one for the designee, because we probably need to address that. Okay, we are now at the Northern California World Trade Center Board. Currently, Mr. Desmond is the member, this is another one of those boards where you made a decision last year to go out of rotation, so you're in line with the rotation now if you want to go with the chair or vice chair.
Yeah, it's a huge suck of time, you know, I mean...
Maybe Supervisor Hume should be on it, but we can leave this one.
Eight years I've never been to a meeting, so...
Okay, moving on to, oh, we're just going to leave that the same? Yeah, they went out of rotation last year, and so now it's back on rotation. Yeah, okay. Regional Human Rights Fair Housing Commission, so Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Frost are the members, and the alternate is Mr. Hume, you've assumed that seat for Mr. Natoli, are we leaving that the same?
Just for Mr. Hume's edification, we meet about 30 minutes a year. Okay. Let me know if you can't make it. Yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, guys, let's go to the SECOG. So this one's a little tricky. For Mr. Kennedy and Ms. Frost, your terms have expired, these are four-year terms, so do you want to remain on the board, or does anyone else, this is where you guys will need to discuss who's going to sit?
Isn't Supervisor Kennedy in rotation to chair?
Yes.
This one, this one isn't a rotation of the chair or vice chair?
No, 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 on SECOG.
He's in rotation to chair SECOG.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know, I'm sorry, I did not know. So you're the chair of SECOG? Okay, so then we'll just...
Patrick is.
And I'd like to...
My point being is that...
Let's be clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys have an expired, so it's the only person that's expired is Mr. Desmond, so are you remaining on the board?
No, that's not accurate.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The opposite of that, yeah.
I'm so sorry, you guys.
I'm hearing that they'd like to continue, obviously.
Yes, thank you. We'll leave it the same. Okay, moving on to SAFCA, this one is, a couple things need to happen. So for Ms. Frost, do you want to appoint a new alternate?
Yeah, I'd like to appoint my chief of staff, Denise Martian.
Okay. And then Mr. Hume, would you like to designate an alternate?
Can I carry that over to my other two alternate?
Yes. Okay, and then moving on to regional, well, this is the Sacramento Area Sewer District, all of you are on this board, and so Mr. Hume assumed the seat by default. Moving on to Sacramento Central Groundwater Authority, Mr. Hume, you assumed the seat of Mr. Natoli, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay.
Okay, we're, and then do we want to leave Michael Peterson and Carrie Schmitz as the designee on there? Okay, let's go on to the next. Sacramento County Disaster Council, so this is the, this would be the chair and vice chair rotation, so Mr. Hume, you know, assumed Mr. Natoli's seat, so we'll need to change that. So are you okay with that?
Yes, so all the primary with Supervisor Kennedy as the alternate.
Okay, that's fine. Let me just mark that down. And then we have the Sacramento County Mental Health Board. Mr. Kennedy is a member on that board. This was one of those things as well where you went out of rotation, so, and Mr. Hume is the alternate, so do we want to change anything?
Well, I would like to offer it up to other members, I've been on there for eight years, and...
that Board, this was one of those things as well where you went out of rotation, so, and Mr. Hume is the alternate, so do we want to change anything?
Well, I would like to offer it up to other members, I've been on there for eight years, and I don't mind serving him, but I want to give others an opportunity if that's something that they're interested in.
I'd like to have Supervisor Kennedy continue. I think he's doing a wonderful job.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and then what about the alternate, right now that would be Mr. Hume? So it's typically a Chair or Vice Chair Designee, so do we?
Just keep in mind, for other members, the one conflict is it often meets when LAFCO meets, so if you're on LAFCO, it's difficult.
Supervisor Hume, you okay?
Yeah, unless anybody else is dying to be the alternate, I'm happy to take that on, okay?
Okay, great, thank you. And then for the Public Facilities Financing Corporation, this is where the Chair becomes the President, and then the Vice Chair becomes the Vice President, and this is just an automatic rotation. And then Mr. Serna also sits on this Board, would you like to remain on that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So are all five Supervisors on this? Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so sorry, you guys. This is my first time doing it electronic way, I'm used to paper.
No worries.
So bear with me, thank you. And so we're just doing the Chair and Vice Chair rotation on that one.
Correct.
Okay, the Sacramento County Water Agency, Mr. Hume is assuming that seat, for the Water Financing Authority, Mr. Hume is assuming that seat, and for SETA, Mr. Hume, you assumed Mr. Natoli's seat, this is a two-year rotation, and then Mr. Kennedy, so do we want to reappoint?
Yes, I believe the Chair would like to serve on that.
I would like to serve on SETA unless there's an objection.
I would like to remain.
So I'll serve on with Supervisor Kennedy?
Okay.
Thank you, Supervisor Hume.
And so you'll be the alternate or the member?
No, they're two members.
Two members, I believe, right?
Yes, there's two members.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that, got it. I'm just making so many mistakes today. Okay, the LAFCO, it looks like Mr. Serna's term expired.
I'm happy to relinquish the alternate position, but if there's no interest, I'll happy to continue.
I've served on LAFCO, happy to do it, but happy to leave it.
Yeah, I did, I'm happy to relinquish the alternate position to Supervisor Hume.
Okay, noted. And then for the Metro Air Quality Management District, it looks like all the Board members sit on that Board, and Mr. Hume assumed the seat. For Metro Cable Television, so all of the Board members sit on that Board, we need to take action on Supervisor Frost's alternate.
Denise Martian.
And Mr. Hume, did you want to continue yours?
Yeah, I'll carry that over, and I apologize, I just need to have a conversation with my Chief of Staff.
Got it.
And I believe that my information is stale, and that my Chief of Staff, Keaton Riley, is the alternate.
Got it, I will update that. Okay, moving on to Sacramento Placard Transportation Corridor, so right now it looks like Mr. Hume is the member assuming Mr. Natoli's seat, and Ms. Frost, you're the alternate, are we gonna leave that the same?
That's fine. Is that what you, okay?
Doesn't matter to me.
It's fine by me.
Okay.
Okay. I actually received an inquiry about that Board this morning, so they're anxious to know who's gonna be sitting. Okay, Public Library Authority Governing Board, Mr. Hume, you assumed Mr. Natoli's seat, we will continue your alternate, and then does anyone else want to change any of the alternates that you have for your?
Yes.
Okay.
So replacing Karina Telemontes will be Noel Mora, who is a newly-elected member of the Nostalgus Unified School District.
Thank you.
Board of Trustees.
Got it.
And for District Two, the alternate will be, in his, Chinua Rhodes, a trustee at Sacramento City Unified.
Thank you, and moving down, Mr. Desmond?
No change for me.
And Ms. Frost?
Denise Martian.
They must be elected officials?
Oh, must be elected, then I will need to push that forward and consider it.
Got it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to Regional Sanitation, Mr. Hume, you're assuming the seat of Mr. Natoli, and then for Regional Transit, it looks like we need to take action on Mr. Serna.
I would prefer to stay on.
Okay, so we will reappoint you there. And for Transportation Authority, we need to basically just reappoint Mr. Serna and Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Hume, because those terms expired, and those are elected officials. And Mr. Serna, do you want to keep Mr. Avdis?
I do.
Yeah, okay, great. And then for the Sacramento Valley Basin-Wide Air Pollution Control Council, Mr. Hume, you've assumed that seat for Mr. Natoli, and Mr. Kennedy, you're the alternate, would you like to leave this the same?
I would be willing to give that up if anybody would prefer to take it on.
Congratulations, Mr. Hume.
Very good.
Okay, now we're on to the San Joaquin Delta Conservancy, Mr. Hume, you assume that seat for Mr. Natoli, and currently the alternate is Mr. Don Thomas, so not sure if you need to make any changes to that, would you like to continue?
I would like to continue.
Okay. All right, almost done, guys. On the South Sacramento Conservation Agency, JPA, it looks like, Mr. Hume, you assumed the seat of Mr. Natoli, so are we leaving that as it is?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then for the Tobacco Securitization Authority of Northern California, right now that is Mr. Kennedy, Ms. Frost are members, and then Mr. Hume, you assumed Mr. Natoli's alternate seat for that, no problems with that? Okay? And then for the Tobacco Securitization Corporation, you assumed Mr. Natoli's seat on that as well. That concludes that.
So I just want to, if I may, Mr. Chair, I made a flippant comment before that I'm not sure Mr. Hume completely understood, but when, you know, just a few years ago before Flo took the job of Clerk for this Board, that would have taken an hour and a half, and none of us would have understood the process, so I want to compliment Flo and, you know, what you've done to make that a far less painful and efficient process.
Thank you, you're so kind. Okay, so that's that, do you want to, he's ready now, okay, so let's move on to that.
Okay, so we'll go back to, okay, thank you very much, Flo, for getting through that, and so we will go back to item forty-six.
Yeah, let me read that back into the record since this is an appeal. Doing business as Tooney Massage and Tooney Healthcare Center, request for review of business license, revocation of special business license number SPB 12019-00315, and general business license number GNB 32109-01138.
Okay, thank you. Blake?
Thank you. Good afternoon again, Chair, Supervisors, and welcome Supervisor Hume.
Thank you.
My name is Blake Sequera, again with County Counsel. Ms. Chae Zing Yu, the appellant in this matter, was given proper notice of this hearing, it's Exhibit F in your record. The hearing was set to begin at 2:30 today, Ms. Yu was not present and is not present. A translator, Ms. Feng Li, with World Services, who is here and present, spoke with Ms. Yu at about 3:00 this afternoon, Ms. Yu informed her that she no longer wants to continue with the appeal. With that information, I would request this Court uphold the finding of the hearing officer and find the revocation to be final. And Ms. Li, Ms. Feng Li, the translator, is present if you would like clarification or have any questions for her.
Okay, and I don't think that's even necessary at this point, I'll look to our County Counsel.
No, I don't believe it is.
Okay, so the recommendation from staff is to essentially withdraw the appeal, right, Blake?
No, he's asking.
I think the recommendation is to uphold the appeal because she has withdrawn it and also not appeared, so for consistency's sake, I think that's the best approach.
Okay.
I can move, I can move the staff's recommend, County Counsel's recommendation to uphold the, to uphold, not uphold the appeal.
Uphold the hearing officers.
The revocation.
Yes.
Okay, Chair will second. And then, but before we move forward, any public comment on this item, ma'am, Court?
Let me just double check. We do not have any callers in the system, and I just want to go on record, I'm not sure what's happening, but it appears that there might be some sort of a glitch in the phone system, and I just want to make sure my staff is aware that you've got to let me know if there's someone in the queue.
But we do know for certain the appellant in this case is not here to appear, and she's made that request that you've articulated to us, okay.
That is correct, I was told that she.
And I don't have anyone on the line for her, no.
Don't see any other caller coming.
So no callers for item forty-six, so I'm going to close the queue.
Great. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the staff recommendation to uphold the revocation. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Mr. Chair, someone basically said that they were in the queue for the budget item, although for several minutes I had asked, and there was no reference of them, so I just want to put on the record that I made the decision that we can't take, that we've already closed the item.
Right.
So we'll have to take a written public comment.
I agree, they can submit a written public comment, and we will move on to the next item, which I believe now is item forty-eight.
Yeah.
Thank you, Blake.
Now we'll go to your nominations. Okay, for item forty-eight, you are continuing to January the 24th, the County Service Area Four C Delta, Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council, continuing to February 7th, Rio Linda Elverta Community Planning Advisory Council, continuing to February 28th, the Galt Arno Cemetery District, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Your first matter is the Carmichael Recreation and Park District.
Please nominate Martin Ross.
Okay, and then Elk Grove Consumnes Cemetery District, Mr. Hume?
Yeah, so for all of mine, I need to continue as well.
Would you like to continue to the 24th, February 7th, or February 28th?
So I'm looking at that, and I don't see the Elk Grove one, I believe there was some confusion over who the applicant is, and I need to interview the new applicant. Let's look at 228, please.
Okay. North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, we'll start with Mr. Desmond.
Please continue to January 24th, pending an interview.
Great, and then Ms. Frost?
Please continue to February 28th.
Okay, thank you. Sacramento County Mental Health Board, we'll start with Mr. Serna.
District One would like to nominate Matthew Gallagher.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Please continue to February 7th.
And Mr. Desmond?
Please reappoint William Cho.
Thank you. Sacramento Environmental Commission, Mr. Desmond?
The Chiefs recommend continuing to February 28th.
Okay, and then the Sylvan Cemetery District, Ms. Frost?
I'd like to nominate James Montiten and Anthony Rago, and continue the remainder to February 28th.
Okay, thank you so much. For your next item, that would be the County Executive Comments.
Okay, I'll turn to our County Exec.
Thank you, good afternoon. I just want to briefly comment on the weather emergency that we're facing right now, and comment that the EOC is active and working hard in many fronts, and we will be coming back on January 24th with a report from the EOC Director.
Okay, thank you, and I had a question about that, so if the, what is the term of the disaster, the local declaration, 60 days, 90 days of?
Sixty days.
It's sixty days.
From the date that you adopted it, which was last January 3rd.
And if it just lapses due to time, do we need to get a report back? In other words, I'm saying, I mean, would we need any, to do any, take any action, or would our OES Director need to come, okay, great. So we'll see you on the 20, or we'll talk about some of these actions on the 20. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll look to my colleagues, I see Supervisor Frost in the queue.
I just wanted to say that we may not be back together before next Monday, which is Martin Luther King's birthday or celebration. Martin Luther King Jr. was that incredible leader who believed that the content of someone's character is more important than the color of their skin, and it's one of my, he's one of my most inspired leaders, and just thought I would mention it, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Frost. Supervisor Hume?
I just wanted to say that despite all of the admonitions to the contrary, I found the public engagement today to be very cordial, and, you know, I think this is a very well-functioning room and good body to be on, so.
How about the engagement on the dais?
Leaves a lot to be done. Let me click my orange button now.
Well, I'll just, I don't see anybody else in the queue, I know we have an adjournment of memory, but just welcome Supervisor Hume, it's really a pleasure to have you up here, and it's really nice that we have, you know, this first meeting in the year, and kind of, you know, I think this Board spends a lot of time developing goodwill among us, which I think informs our efforts throughout the year in developing good policy in Sacramento County, so certainly proud to be here and serving with all of you, and certainly serving with the county staff. So with that, I'll turn over, I believe Supervisor Frost, you have an adjournment of memory?
We weren't quite ready, so we're gonna do it at the next meeting.
Okay, well, then there being no further business, I'll adjourn the meeting at an